It is now six o'clock and I call the June twenty-seventh city council meeting to order. The city staff, please call the roll.
Mayor Hattasol.
Here.
Commissioner Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Motta.
Here.
Commissioner Morse.
President.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Hi.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This is a work session meeting this evening and the first item is the two thousand twenty-four budget discussion with requests by outside entities. Rena.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Let me bring up the. Oh, thank you, Jared. Okay, can't see. Tonight is the second budget work session for the two thousand twenty-four budget. We are presenting outside agency requests for seven agencies and I will present information based on the slides. And then I ask that if there is a representative from each agency to come forward and present, if they have information or answer any questions you may have, and then I will go on to the next agency. Then after we are done with the agency request, Jared Wassenger, Assistant City Manager, will come forward to provide information regarding the feedback for our special alcohol funding and general fund, social services funding. And then we'll wrap up with receiving some feedback regarding the revenue neutral rate in preparation for the upcoming meeting on July eleventh. Here are the seven agencies plus Jared again will come forward to talk about the Community Support Funds Advisory Board. First, we'll go over Manhattan Public Library and then Aggieville Business Association, Downtown Manhattan, Inc., Manhattan Art Center, and Rowley County Historical Society. Those four that I just read, they are all usually funded through our Tourism and Convention Promotion Fund through transient guest tax. And then Manhattan Area Technical College is a new request this year and Flint Hills Area Transportation Agency. They both are being, are requesting funds to come from our Economic Development Fund. This slide is related to the historical requests from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two and twenty-three. And it's really budget to actuals for two thousand twenty-one and twenty-two and then twenty-three is what was requested and then what was approved. And so it's broken out by Economic Development Fund, what has been funded over the, through those agencies for those years. And then our library fund, the library employee benefit fund, and then Tourism and Convention Fund, those four agencies there. The first agency, Manhattan Public Library, they submitted requests for their general fund as well as their employee benefit fund. Both funds are funded by property taxes and then anything not covered by property taxes are made up through motor vehicle taxes and some delinquent property taxes. The funds for the library are used to pay operating expenses and debt service on their children's expansion project. Our major distributions for property taxes come in in January and June and we're at ninety-five percent of the collection rate for two thousand twenty-three. The request for the library for this year is seven percent above the two thousand twenty-three's request. And then for the employee benefit fund, again, they are paid from property taxes. And then any motor vehicle taxes that may come in as well as delinquent property taxes, but primarily property taxes. And then funds are used to pay for employee benefit expenses. This fund is also at ninety-five percent collection and their increase is ten percent over the two thousand twenty-three budget. I included these next two slides just to show what we originally presented at that first budget work session. We presented information based on a valuation at nine point five three four two percent, which equated to five point three five one mils. And then we received some feedback about a six percent valuation. And so that would equate to five point one seven eight mils for the library fund and the library employee benefit fund. What is being forecasted in terms of the taxes levied compared to the request is on the next slide and I want to show you that. So at a valuation at nine point five three four two percent in the library's two requests and based on the forecasted taxes levied, this is the variance that would need to be made up. And again, usually the variance is made up through motor vehicle taxes and then whatever delinquent taxes that we may receive. And then if the valuation is reduced to six percent increase instead, then this would be the variance. Historically, we've brought in anywhere between forty to fifty thousand dollars on the employee benefit fund side and between one fifty and one seventy-five on the library fund side. So there would still be a variance on if that, if we reduce that valuation at six percent. So those are the four slides related to the library. Mr. Norris is here. Yes, but I welcome any questions before he comes up and presents.
So is the valuation from the county, is that set then or not quite yet? Well, I'm not sure. What's the, I don't understand the difference between the nine point five and the six percent.
The nine and a half is what the county has told us.
Right.
The valuation is. The six is based on feedback from a few commissioners last time of wanting to hold growth to that six percent.
That, that's our requested target date.
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. That's all I had, I think. Thank you.
Okay.
Now you're up, Eric.
Do you need any like?
No, I don't need.
Okay. Okay.
Could be you need commissioners and mayor? My name is Eric Norris. I'm the Director of the Manhattan Public Library. I'll just step you through a couple of things with the general fund first. There is a seven percent increase with that. This increase is mostly reflected because we have, since nineteen sixty-five, we've had a shared organizational experience between the Manhattan Public Library and the North Central Kansas Library System. We are looking at separating those two organizations in mid, anywhere between July and August of twenty-four. And with that separation, then MPL is going to bring on some more costs for the shared salaries that are between those two organizations. My position, two upper level administration positions and then two lower salary grade positions are going to be absorbed a hundred percent by MPL. So that's what, that's that reflection of the increase in that salary line item. This year with the staff, we did put a three percent COLA and a four percent merit increase into that as well. And then we've also have experienced in the first part of this year, a very sharp increase in utility costs. At this moment, where we are with our twenty-three budget, we're about sixty percent spin out of what we budgeted for utilities. So we did increase that by about forty thousand dollars. These tax, tax dollars account for about seventy-three percent of our total library revenue that goes into it. And, and that accounts for what we're seeing with that general fund. Moving into the employee benefit fund. What I'd need to do is ask the commission if I can get with the city manager's office and re-figure what we have for this request. In looking at it after we turned in, I was really unaware of the six percent goal that the city was looking for. And I'm interested in making that, trying to reach that goal, try and get somewhere closer than a ten percent hike in this. Traditionally, what the library does with its employee benefit funds is it puts on an eight percent increase over the year just to account for any type of increases that go up. We also include two family, the costs of two family memberships in case we have somebody get married, somebody have a child. We do have a lot of young staff, so that's happened to us before. And then we do incorporate another two single, single packages in case we hire more people, something along those lines. The other thing that I would like to go back and really reconsider is how that separation between these throughout the year makes that. So what I'm asking for with that particular fund is if I can get a little bit of time to get with the city manager's office and see likely where those increases are going to be, double check to make sure that you've got the right number of employees that are being covered with it. And then to, and try to gun for closer to a six percent increase over that instead of a ten percent. So, but with that, I'd like to work through the process about how to do that, make sure we hit timelines and deadlines and that.
That's an admirable goal. We appreciate that. Anybody got a question?
Yeah, just curious on the separation with the library association is, obviously you said that's going to cost more money. What's the reasoning behind that or the goal for that or?
The reasoning is, is that the, the NC KLS is its own, it's the North Central Kansas Library System. There are seven library systems in the state of Kansas. When they all started out in nineteen sixty-five, they were all partnered with, with the largest library in their home county. Because each one of these regional systems serve between twelve and thirty counties around in there, just general ballpark sort of stuff. Over the years, they slowly separated out. There's only, at this moment, there's only two of us left that have this shared, shared administrative level. One of the things that has to happen is because of the MOU and how we've worked traditionally is that the NC KLS, who, they levy their own funds, they've got their own board, but because of the tie-in of those higher level administrative, those shared positions, NC KLS has to follow MPL's policies. And that does create some tensions because they have a different mission, they have different goals, and then we've got shared policies that overlap. And to a certain degree, I, I spend seventy percent of my time with the library and thirty percent of the time as the director of NC KLS. And having a director that only pays for, pays attention thirty percent of the time to an organization that's a one point five million dollar budget and oversees twelve counties, I feel like that holds that entity back. And this is a conversation that's been had behind the scenes for several years. And, you know, the Manhattan Public Library is the seventh largest library in the state of Kansas and you've got a director that's only paying attention to it seventy percent of the time. We just feel like now is the time to separate. And in the last, last year, another regional system separated, leaving only two of us to do it.
Okay, so you'll get thirty percent more time at our library, so you'll be able to make it that much more efficient to get down to six percent then?
We should, we will work. We do work.
So that'd be my other feedback is we're really trying to get to that. And if you're over that number, it means we need to get it out of someplace else that, to get to our goal. So we'll appreciate you working to, you know, get down to that between the two coming out at a six percent number.
And I just echo what John said. I appreciate the effort to do that.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Anything else you got for us?
No. May I ask the city manager a direct question?
Sure.
Is it okay to contact you and get that worked out to make sure we hit deadlines and timelines? Okay, I'll get started on that this week and, and we'll go get that worked out. So are there, appreciate that. So any other further questions?
Linda.
Does that mean that the thirty percent that the North Central Kansas Library System currently pays of your salary will be shifting back over to MPL?
Those, that's part of the absorption that we have to do because they levy their own, they levy their own taxes for that. So what they're up against is they have to hire a director, which they've done, and they're bringing seventy percent more to the table to, to cover that director's position.
Yeah.
And then they have the other, the other positions in there too. They need to, they need to bring that money forward from their budget to pay for that.
But that leaves a deficit for your position of thirty percent then?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. For next year.
We're, we are looking at the separation of what we budgeted with those salary line items is.
In this, in this budget?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate.
Absolutely. And also I did leave some stats for you just on the desk earlier about where we're at so far in twenty-three and just kind of where it compares. And I would like to point out that some of the circulation numbers are down. We're seeing that. But there's been just a shift in attitudes about, you know, how people are consuming products. I didn't get our online and e-checkouts, which are continuing to grow. There was a huge spike in twenty, in twenty twenty with those numbers. The circulation numbers have kind of leveled off a little bit on the physical. But the, what's important to kind of look at is our door count numbers that come through. They count people coming through one way. And as you can see, let me pull that out real quick. The door count where we're at, January through May of twenty-three is one hundred and fifty thousand people. We're averaging about a thousand people a day that are coming into the, coming into the library to use services. And last week, Tuesday, coming back from, we were closed for Juneteenth. We came back, we opened up, the whole staff was feeling, it's been a busy day. This is a busy day. Wednesday morning, we checked the door counts for that day and we had eighteen hundred people through the door in one day. So though those physical circulations are leveling out just a little bit, we're still seeing people come through, come through and use the library services quite a bit. And I attribute that to, you know, there's a lot of services that are there anymore besides just checking out books. So.
All right. Go sharpen up your pencil and come on back.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Rena, I remembered my other question I was going to have. Is the city sort of figuring ten percent increase for employee benefit stuff too? Or have we got a, ours number isn't quite that high maybe, is it?
We haven't finalized that information yet, sir.
Okay, so you're still tweaking.
Yes, sir.
It. Okay. What else you got?
So the next four agencies are related to our Tourism and Convention Promotion Fund, Aggieville Business Association, Downtown Manhattan, Inc., as well as Manhattan Art Center and then Rowley County Historical Society, Wolf House. Each of the requests for those four agencies are the same as two thousand twenty-three. Again, they're all funded by transient guest tax and they're used to promote. Aggieville is to promote the Aggieville Entertainment District. They receive funds from the state. We do January, April, July, and October, and then that's how we distribute the funds back out to them. In two thousand sixteen and seventeen, they were funded by the Economic Development Fund. And then we did have some shortfalls in two thousand twenty and twenty-one due to COVID. And we do anticipate fully collecting our transient guest taxes for two thousand twenty-three. And all agencies will be fully funded. And so do you have any questions regarding Aggieville Business Association? And I, Dennis, he is here if you do have any questions of him.
Do you have anything?
They're requesting the same amount of money.
Yes, they are.
Yeah.
I would just make a. Good evening. Just let you know that, you know, that, yeah, it is, it's the same. Yeah, Dennis Cook with Aggieville Business Association. It is the same. Just to give you a, a quick update that we do have a hundred and one businesses in Aggieville. About just recently, you know, we, you know, we're still trying to go through redevelopment. We're kind of at a standstill at the moment, but we've had some, you know, some, some transformation there on the, on the west end. And which means we've added, added four new businesses that are, that have replaced other businesses, but including, you know, bringing a, a national bank in. So, you know, things are going, things are going well and we're hoping that we can get this Midtown project back on track soon. So other than that, we're, we're doing okay. I'll be happy to answer any questions if you might have.
I don't think we have any. Thank you, Dennis.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Rena?
Downtown Manhattan, Inc. is the next agency. Again, that request is the same from two thousand and twenty-three and that was up from two thousand twenty-two and prior's request. Again, the same type of purpose to promote downtown area. And then they received funding the same way as Aggieville. They did have some shortfalls in two thousand twenty and twenty-one and we've been paying them quarterly their anticipated contracted amount. And we anticipate fulfilling their allocation for two thousand twenty-three. Don't know if Gina's here or not.
She is.
Hey, Gina.
So the boost last year, was that, was that a part-time person or something? Or what was, it was a fifteen thousand dollar increase, wasn't it?
It was an increase, a position.
Was it, that's what it was for staff?
A fall.
Okay. All right. Anybody got any questions for Gina?
Can I still make my presentation?
She's.
If it's, if it's fast.
She still wants to come up and tell you about it. And it's not a bad thing. It's a good thing.
You need to bring something up?
Okay, Gina. Hi, Gina.
The presentation, I think, was a little off.
Yeah, I got it right here. You're welcome. It's not the best.
Introduce yourself and your sidekick.
I will. Gina Snyder, Executive Director of Downtown Manhattan. My sidekick is Danielle Parsons. She is our event manager and the, and the person.
Move the microphone closer to you. Tilt it. There you go. Good. Thank you.
The person who, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah.
The person for which we had the increase, she went from part-time to full-time. And she will answer any questions you have about our awesome event series that she puts together because it's pretty cool. Thank you for having me and allowing me to come up here. This is my favorite time of year and I would have been really sad if you did not let me come up here and talk about downtown. As you know from the packet of information that you received, we are requesting the same as last year. It's ninety-three thousand dollars. I always take this meeting for fifteen years. In July, I will be here fifteen years. And I've always used this work session to just kind of highlight some city staff that has gone above and beyond to help downtown just thrive like we are. And this year, Teresa Britt, she has been my reliable communication partner with all of the construction projects that are going on. She helps that permitting process for the roll-off dumpsters and whenever contractors come down to the district, she, she coordinates that. She'll walk an area with me, makes it so much easier for me to be able to talk to the neighborhood about what's happening, how long that construction project's going to be going on, what kind of parking impact it's going to be. So that relationship is really important and she's amazing. The other person is Heath Romine. He has been a partner of downtown's for such a long time when he was down with his chalk stick in downtown and that was his main area. He's since been promoted to supervisor and he is an absolute. We, we would, we can't have our smooth parking transition and enforcement transition without him. He called me and asked me if I wanted to do a ride-along so I could see how the new equipment worked. And I took him up on that and we, we went around and it was really useful. It was really good to understand how it worked so that I could then communicate that to the neighborhood. And we did a big education campaign, Danielle actually did, for our patrons that come and visit, explaining where to park, how long you can park. And all of that was just based on really solid information from Heath. So I just wanted to shout him out as a fantastic city employee and I, I, I hope to work with him for a long time. This is just our budget. I know you can't really see it. If you ever have any specific questions, open book, please just come and talk to me about it. I do want to highlight three things that I'm really, really proud of in two thousand twenty-three about this budget. And that is that our Board of Directors, we took on three pretty significant initiatives in order to increase our revenue and we were successful right out of the gate. And I'm really proud about that. The first one is we've increased our BID fees for the first time in twenty-five years by ten percent across the board. Now, we didn't get a ten percent increase because we've had many for-profit business spaces turn into nonprofit business spaces. So we, we can't, and we can't charge nonprofit entities. So we did get about a six percent increase in our revenue from our BID fees. Second is we really, we've had a Friends of the Neighborhood Association membership program for a couple of years, but, but our Board of Directors really engaged on that and they did a membership drive. And we went from about twelve hundred dollars a year to now five thousand and we're getting more and more members, like literally every day. It's really exciting. And the third thing, which is so thrilling to me because it means so much, is that we, we're, we kicked off a downtown partners program. And these are corporations that believe in the mission of downtown, that want to be the partners together. We help them, they help us, and they've pledged five thousand dollars annually. So we have four corporate partners and we're getting twenty thousand dollars from, from those four partners. That's Merit Trust, United Bank and Trust, Finn's Pub, and BHS. So really so thankful and, and really kind of proud that those people wanted to work with us. So we've been able to increase our, our revenue by doing those things. And I, I want you to be really happy and proud of that because there's so much support for downtown. And it, it's just a good reflection on the decisions that we've all made collectively. I know you all know what Downtown Manhattan is. This is just our mission statement. I think it's important to be reviewed every once in a while. I do want to highlight that we do have three thousand six hundred and three parking stalls downtown. And they're only used about sixty-five to seventy percent of the time. So I'm happy to always work on parking perception issues, but we don't really have a parking problem in downtown currently. I have my, some of my team with me. Could you just please stand up really quickly? Team, please. I'm so proud of these people. I'm so thankful and grateful for these people. They've worked, this is one of the best boards I've ever had. They've worked so, so hard to further our mission. They're all in. They're amazing.
Of course you would be still standing.
We have, we break down our, our goals by five years and one year, our five-year goals. Some of them have been on the list a little bit longer than, than they should be. The mall plaza renovation has been on our five-year goals initiatives for eight to ten years. So I'd love to see that, get off that five-year goal plan and turn into a done deal. But I think most of these are doable. We're constantly working. That's another great thing about this board is they're, they're just really willing to listen to what we need and, and move forward on that. The next, these are annual goals and objectives. I won't go through them, but I do want to highlight just a few things. We've started our partnerships with Public Works in order to start this public right-of-way during construction and how we manage that better, taking care of our infrastructure downtown. We have such awesome communication with our street and traffic department. It's incredible. And working on initiatives that just enhance downtown, whether that's an ordinance or just an initiative. We've done some surveys. Every year we do surveys. Third Thursday is the favorite family event. It's what, it's what brings families to us. Also, the parade was a big, a huge one. The Mercury Reader's Choice had us as the number one favorite event in Manhattan. Food and beverage is why people come down on a weekly basis. And as I stated last year, we are still really showing equal representation in all of our age groups and all of our income levels. And we love that. Danielle has worked so hard to bring us events that, that everyone can participate in, in some level. We know some of our events are expensive, some of them are totally free. We, we've really tried to, to create a neighborhood where everyone can be a part of our, of our district. We have seventeen events a year and five Third Thursdays. So Danielle is very, very busy. We have a brand-new event coming this year along with a new downtown art coordinator. Heather, please raise your hand. Heather's the owner of Flight Crew Coffee and she's also an artist. And she is taking on the role for downtown on our board as the art coordinator. And she's bringing a downtown art walk to our neighborhood and it'll be fantastic, no doubt. Stay tuned. We've had thirty-five businesses opened. This is June to June. Since the last time I, I came to talk to you, we've had thirty-five new businesses. We've had a net gain of ten. Three business expansions, three businesses still to open this summer. Pretty excited about that. Sitting at about ninety-eight percent, probably a little bit more. We don't have very much space at all. We have no retail space on points. There are two thousand eight hundred and ninety-five, give or take, employees in the downtown district. That does not include Manhattan Marketplace because that's a very transient employee district and really hard to count that population of, of people. We have a, according to the Long Range, Beyond Tomorrow Long Range survey that went out, ninety-four percent value of walkable downtown. This is what we did ten, fifteen years ago, was created a walkable district. We need to keep moving forward with better lighting and. We need to keep moving forward with better lighting in the alleys, make sure our sidewalks are safe and continue along with that. Downtown has a walk score of eighty-nine on a scale of one hundred, which is pretty darn good. The people who answer our surveys want outdoor dining platforms to become permanent. They want soft spaces with trees and grass and they love the public art initiatives that we've been rolling out as of recently. Over half of our visitors are coming from other states and from more than fifty miles away. The thing that patrons say is missing, drumroll, is that plaza area. Those soft spaces and hard spaces, the places where we can- I mean, this is such an underutilized space right now, we can't really even use it. We need to flatten it out and put up, put in new electrical and audio and power and all the things that make this space usable. It is currently not, you just can't use it. I mean, it's unfortunate. And we have so many groups that, there are so many things. We have a planning committee that has just done nothing but come up with tons of ideas on how to use the plaza space. So we would really love to have that, see that come to fruition. And you guys know that I always talk about how good downtown is and how great we are for Manhattan, but we're also really great for the region. We've calculated through fancy math, about eighteen thousand people are brought in just from our events alone, generating lots of sales tax. And we just, we really feel that through our visitors, local and from afar, that we've done a lot of good for economic development in the community. And lastly, this has been a big year. I told you about our downtown partnership program. We've raised the most money in our Pink of the Pace 5K that we've ever raised before to Johnson Cancer Research Center and we had the most participation. We've had a record number of artists, performers, and entertainers for our Third Thursday event series this year. And we've been partners and hosts to the Second Annual Downtown Juneteenth Art Walk. Probably one of my favorite things that Heather's been working on. Blake Bauer, our property owner, donated two spaces to DMI that we are using as two galleries. We have one called Four O Nine Gallery and the other one called The Underground Collective Gallery. And we are hanging local artists' art in those spaces. And we will use that for artist receptions and for the downtown art walk and just to allow people to come in and look at art and have the opportunity to purchase it. And we don't charge our artists any kind of commission or anything. They just hang their art and when it sells, it sells. So we're really proud about that. And we commissioned a sixty-foot mural that's getting started this week, so pretty exciting. Any questions? Thanks for letting me talk.
Just one, Gina, you never mentioned one of the things that I find DMI does a great job of. And that would be the flowerpots, the flags, the trash. I don't think, I don't think people fully appreciate, you know, the effort that goes into that because downtown is clean. Without DMI, it wouldn't be. City staff doesn't clean that. And so you need to highlight that.
Okay, sorry. We have the best flower baskets in the state of Kansas. Rumor has it we're going to be on a magazine cover, so we'll see. Yes, Rothwell Landscape, but also the Parks Department for the City of Manhattan and the Riley County Parks Department keeps up those planners and the courthouse. And I mean, it's so beautiful and it's definitely a big, huge cooperative event. There's so many people that come together to do that, make it beautiful. And it is, it's more beautiful this year than it's ever been before.
And then keeping the trash and everything out of there, you know, downtown always looks nice. You've got people that handle that and I just think that's underappreciated.
We do, thank you. We actually have an employee that comes and picks up the trash every day.
So what the small plaza renovation thing, what's, who's going to pay for that? When's it supposed to happen? Is it scheduled? What needs to happen to move that forward?
We received ten percent of the CID that's currently in place at the mall. We have a few years of history. It's in place for, I believe, twenty-two years. So we forecasted a reasonable amount of money that we should be ready to come back and talk to you all about committing some resources and committing to a project and having a finance plan with that, including that CID money. That CID money, that ten percent, is specifically for this plaza. We negotiated that at the beginning with the mall. So we need to bring it back and talk about it. The last time those drawings were put together, we were right on the mix of COVID and sales at the mall weren't doing all that great. But they have rebounded and they're generating a pretty substantial amount of money now.
Well, whenever you tear out the old stuff, I want my brick back.
Okay. You're not the first person to ask for that.
Mayor, just in addition, there are a number of things that need to be repaired in that plaza. We did get an estimate and it is over a hundred thousand dollars to do it. So it is a good time for us really to look at the renovation because there's a lot of bricks and a lot of other items that need to be fixed.
Like safety issues, tripping and, I mean, a lot of those bricks are gone. And so, yeah, we need to, it's just unusable space.
I believe you. All right.
I'd like to ask, and it's not Gina can't answer it necessarily, but I'm curious about the upkeep on the platforms. I think we've agreed as a commission, we put them there and we're willing to leave them there, but they have a life and I'm trying to figure out how long they'll last and if the city is prepared to keep them or make them continue on into the future. They were pretty expensive when we first, when we built them.
So we did, city used COVID funds to have those constructed. We are leasing them to businesses that utilize them and they are responsible for maintenance and upkeep of them. I think most are doing a pretty good job of that. Help me out, Jason, with the design life was anticipated to be twenty years. So not to say they won't need some, you know, we don't do a deck at your house for, that's going to last twenty years and you don't do some work on it during that twenty-year period. But technically, the businesses are charged with doing that. We've had to look at some drainage issues from time to time and other trash accumulations. So we've learned from them, but I think generally they've gone over very well.
I think they have too. And I think they've delivered more than probably we anticipated in the beginning. They've been a real success. And I think a lot of people have praised Manhattan for taking the initiative to do that when other communities were not. And so I'm glad we used the COVID money to help keep the businesses in downtown going. I think it was terribly important.
I'll just speak to that real quickly. We had so many, we have downtowns call us all the time and that's one of the main things they want to talk about is how'd you do it? How'd you get it done? Who did it? Who was involved? What did it take? How's it being received?
You could charge.
Right?
Good, I'm glad.
I just wanted to say a very nice presentation. Glad you did it. I hope a lot of people pay attention to what you did because your district, I mean, you did come to us last year, asked for a bigger investment. We did that. But now your own people are making that investment, a program like this partners thing. I think it sets a good example, you know, for others. Definitely with all the stuff you've done here makes us, said, makes me, I mean, was supporter of your plaza project, but something like this is really something we can showcase and say, you know, we're investing in people who invest in themselves and are bringing their own money to the table and making it happen. So great job there.
Thank you for seeing that. Really appreciate it.
That's a good quote.
All right, thanks Gina, Danielle.
Thank you.
See you next year. All right.
See you next year.
Next, we have Manhattan Arts Center. And their budget request is forty-three thousand seven hundred. It's been that same request for a few years now. Again, funded through transient guest tax and we anticipate fulfilling the 2023 allocation request. Not for sure if anybody from Manhattan Arts Center is here. Any questions, commissioners?
Check that one off.
Okay. And then the Riley County Historical Society Wolf House, same five thousand dollar request. There were some shortfalls in 2020 and 21. Just used to pay for some expenses at the museum. Is there a representative?
Hi.
Good evening, commissioners. And thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight. My name's Catherine Hensler. I'm the Director of the Riley County Historical Museum. Tonight, representing the Riley County Historical Society, which is our nonprofit arm. So first, I want to thank you for the years of support that you've provided our organization in the past. We know at the museum, we like to talk about history and our two organizations have a great history of partnership and support. We come to you this year asking for no more than last year. So our last request was five thousand. We ask for the same this year. And I'm just going to share a little bit of statistical information that's occurred over the course of the last year. A lot of these things we're very proud of and we don't often get the chance to share it with our community. So what we've really done in this last year is document statistical information. We know we have visitors. We keep track of visitors, but we don't always compile it into some form of a report. And in the last year, we have had slightly over a thousand visitors to the Wolf House Museum. Those are good numbers for us, especially coming out of COVID. But what we're really proud about this year is we were able to bring back our field trips full-scale from pre-COVID numbers. We, of course, didn't offer the field trips in 2020 or 21. And then, as most of you know, we had a couple of hard years with the loss of our longtime director and interim directors. And so because of that, we also did not, were not able to bring back field trips full-scale. So this spring, we were able to bring them back and we had four hundred and thirty-two fourth graders of Riley County School Districts and their teachers visit the Wolf House. We had over forty volunteers that came out to support those programs. And what they do is they have little stations of hands-on history experiences. So those could range from anything from cooking in the nineteenth century to how to do laundry, toys and games, entertainment of the Victorian era. And so we feel it's a really great opportunity for us to interact with the younger generation and get them incorporated into their history and their culture. And this is just an opinion of mine and I know the society feels the same way, but we feel it's a really important part of young people as they develop, to be connected to their community and to be proud of where they came from. So we were able to use the money that the city granted us last year for those educational programs. And we intend to do that in the upcoming years. So out of those attendance numbers that I shared, sixty-one percent of our visitation comes from here in Manhattan, twenty-five from other communities across the state of Kansas, nine percent from the neighboring states, ones that we share borders with, and then five percent from additional states all around the country. One of the goals that we do have for this current year we're in and for 2024 is to increase our visitation. We feel we've got a jewel down there on Fremont and Juliette and we really want to make sure that we are getting the word out and sharing. One of the great things, again, that the funding from the city allows us to do is offer free admission. We do not charge any admission for any programs that we offer to the public through the Wolf House. And so we're open on Saturdays and Sundays consistently. The only time we're closed is if there's a federal holiday. And there's always a tour guide who can provide guided tours through the museum. And like I said, we never charge for that and we're very proud that we're able to do that. We've hosted a number of open houses, the most recently being the Holiday Open House last December. Also had a great attendance. We hope to be able to provide additional open houses, not just holiday time, but sometime midsummer. We have beautiful grounds and gardens there and we'd like to start showing those off. Some of the things that you might notice if you drive by, and again, any support from the city goes to, excuse me, allow us as a society to do some of these additional things by offsetting some of the costs. We're really working on the preservation of the site. The site was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2019. It's not just got the Wolf House Museum, but it does have some additional buildings which are in great need of preservation work. And so our organization has been able to start those projects because of being able to provide other programs through this funding. So I do encourage you to swing by sometime. You'll notice some great differences in the little wolf photography studio. We're replacing doors and windows. We'll do an exterior restoration and then hopefully move to the interior. And we do have some great plans for that building. Not ready to share those just yet, but within the next few years, you're going to see some big changes there. Some of the things that we also plan to do with the support this year is we're going to be offering new rotating exhibits at the Wolf House. And that is something that hasn't occurred in quite some time. We do have some space. It's set up as an interior. People can come and walk through and view what a Victorian interior looks like, but it doesn't change. We want to hope, we hope to attract some additional guests and just interest in changing some of those interior exhibits up. The first is scheduled to open in September of this year. And we hope to be able to do additionals in the future. We also hope to be able to offer some workshops, hands-on workshops. Like I mentioned, we're doing a lot of preservation work to the site. This would be a wonderful opportunity for local preservationists and preservationists throughout the state of Kansas to come and learn hands-on how mortar work is done, how historic siding is replaced, how to replace cedar shakes. Because one of the big issues that we run into, anytime we need work, we can't find contractors that are qualified to work on historic properties. And so it's very hard to find these people. So we're looking at it as an opportunity. If we can, while we're doing the work that needs to be done, bring in people and educate them so they can give back to the preservation community, that would make us very proud. We're also looking at working with some community partners to make our tour available in the Spanish language. We do realize by only offering the English language, we aren't available to all of our visitors and all of the guests who might be interested in coming to the Wolf House. So this fall, we do hope to be able to implement that program and provide an additional language translation of the Wolf House tour. If that's a success, which we're pretty sure it will be, we'd like to then bring that program up to the Museum of Bon Clafon and the Good Noelle State Historic Museum. So on behalf of the Board of Directors and the staff of the Riley County Historical Society, I'd like to thank you for not only considering our request tonight for the operational and educational expenses that'll be coming up to us for this upcoming budget cycle, but thank you for the city's longstanding support of our organization, our mission, and the Wolf House. We're very grateful. Do you have any questions?
No questions, but it was nice to hear all the things that you have planned and the improvements that you're going to make and not to minimize the others, but I really think that changes and attractions is nice to get those return guests and also that Spanish language. Thank you.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
I think those fourth graders will all benefit from the history that you pass along to them because I'm not sure that parents are really qualified to reach back a hundred years and churn butter or, you know, do a few things that, because they, those were so laborious. And, but I appreciate hearing about it. I did come at the holiday to your open house and I thought it was great. And I'm glad that the community and the city and the Historical Society are able to collaborate and partner. It's five thousand dollars, but you make, seems like you make the best of it, so thank you.
It's big to us, yes. Any other questions?
Nope, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Gina, who else?
Two more, sir. In May, Manhattan Area Technical College presented a proposal for support of their Advanced Technology Center project. It's a five-year request through 2028 of two hundred thousand dollars a year. The funds would come from the Economic Development Fund. And so there was support from that May meeting to bring that forward as an outside agency request. And that's what we have for you this evening. And there is someone from Manhattan Area Technical College here if you need to ask any questions.
Has anything changed since May?
A little bit.
Hey.
You wanted me to raise the budget.
That's right. That was your charge.
Good evening again. So some updates on the fundraising. Since our last time together, the state has put in two-point-eight million. Individuals, businesses, and organizations in the region have put in over one-point-five million. The institution's put in about three-quarters of a million, so that's been about five million total. The institutions put in about three quarters of a million, so that's been about five million total, which is about thirty percent of the total construction cost. Remind you that of the seven programs that'll be in this facility, five of the seven will tie to both residential and commercial construction, with construction trades, HVAC, plumbing, a new program, industrial engineering tech, and the electric power and distribution program. You read recently we're a partner with K-State on their new NSF Engines Grant for Biotechnology. So again, our work with biomanufacturing, critical environment tech supports them with this planning grant for two years, and then they can go for major funding. The goal of that Engines Grant and what we're all working on together is to turn this into the Silicon Valley of biotech. And then finally, of course, eighty-six percent of my students stay in the area paying taxes, taking care of your cars, your air conditioning, and buying all sorts of things. So your support is appreciated.
All right. Any other questions? John?
Yeah, you said, um, three quarters of a million from institutions.
From our institution.
From your institution. What about from any of the other government agencies, school district, Riley County?
Half a million, they're playing at the end. Okay?
Excuse me, say again.
The school districts agreed because we have the joint property ownership issue. It's a quitclaim deed, so there's the, they're taking on the liability in case we would go under with the project. But they've agreed to pay the last half million on the project.
Okay, so they're going to actually pay cash?
Yes. And then I've asked the county for two hundred and fifty thousand total over five years.
Any commitment on that?
Not yet. Haven't heard any negative.
So, okay. I think the way you have this structured out to go over the number of years makes me comfortable. But I think when we go to the next year, what we're going to want to see is who put in on these commitments and really hoping we get the county into the, to the game.
We'll have classes starting in it by next fall of '24. It won't be all seven programs, but it'll be four or five of the programs.
Good. Thanks.
Any, any progress with the Flint Hills Regional Council to try to get some regional support?
Chris Boxberger, our Dean of Community and Outreach and Partnerships and all sorts of things like that, he and I are working with them and with Salina Tech on a couple of ideas that we've been bouncing around with a consortium approach to go after some of the funding with, from EDA.
Excellent. All right.
Is it possible to consider paying the one, the full amount out of the Economic Development Fund so that we don't have it to have it come back for two hundred thousand dollars each of the next, what, four years?
So it's not really costing us anything to make those payments? And we just started that process of collecting that money? So it'd be a, it could be a bigger hit than we anticipated, paying all at once.
Mm-hmm. I was just thinking we could get it out of the way, and it wouldn't be coming back every year, adding to this list so, and magnifying how much is on this outside request list.
So I think that our strategy, which we talked about previously, was that this would have less impact on the fund and allow others, over the years, to also access funding and leave more of a balance there for everybody versus this one pay-up and then not being able to take applications because we don't have the revenue.
And if I happen to hit the winning lottery ticket, you don't have to give us any more.
There you go. Keep it up.
Or the state.
And actually, that's what really got my support, was putting this out over a number of years so we can see the others come in. We talked about the county. We want to see that before we go year to year. We pay it all upfront. We take the pressure off and then to really put in the money as we go, go forward.
And in your support for this, I've been working with the legislature. They've, they've asked us to put together some new ideas from the tech colleges on how they can help fund us. But the skin in the game locally, from you, the county, the school district, our donors, is getting a lot of attention on how then they can keep funding a little bit more for us since we don't have taxing authority. So hopefully, we would not need the whole amount over that time. Hopefully, we'll have some success with more fundraising and appropriations.
You mean you're going to come that last year and say, I don't need your two hundred thousand?
I would love to do that.
Wouldn't that be something? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
It's worth talking about. Because there's always sticker shock.
And then my question.
This much and that much, so.
You know, my question for the staff is, I mean, I clearly see this as a good economic development initiative. It makes, it makes sense. It fits with the, the big picture. But just to be sure we don't overcommit, you know, that fund, is there enough money to, to make everything work without stressing the, the system? And that appears to be the case, the way I see it now.
Yeah, we had, recent projections showed sixteen million dollars available in that twenty percent, and thirteen million of it committed.
Okay, so we're still good. That's what I figured. All right. All right. Very good. Rena?
The last agency request is from Flint Hills Area Transportation Agency. They've been funded from various funding sources over the years, but they have been funded from the Economic Development Fund since 2020. Funds are used for their operations, but to help leverage, also to help leverage federal funding. There is a substantial increase to their budget request compared to 2023, and that's due to continued impact of inflation and stagnant growth in other local match funding. So their request is two, two hundred and ninety-three thousand compared to last year of a hundred and forty-three thousand. And it's here. And she has a presentation, and I'll bring that up.
Nice.
Is this, is this good?
Yes.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, Emily?
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to come and visit with you. Now, before we start for just one second, I want to share a great partnership that we are making with the Flint Hills Bread Basket. Carla's here this evening. We have a bus that has outlived its useful life, and we have been strategizing, trying to think, who do we see in the community that might be able to rehome this bus? It still has some good years left in it, even though it has about two hundred and fifty thousand miles on it. But it's in good condition. So we, we've been talking with Carla and her staff, and we're proud to say that this bus is going to be transformed into a mobile food pantry. And so it's going to provide food to those in our community who don't always have great access to, to food and who maybe are having food insecurity. So we're really excited about that partnership, and I wanted to share that with you. So thank you very much for this evening. If you want to go ahead.
Sure.
Oh, sorry.
I'm Daphne McNelly. I'm marketing communications for Ata Bus.
So the staff came up with these numbers, and I just wanted to share it with you a little bit, kind of give a little bit of perspective. We were able to secure two federal and state transit grants for two Manhattan street projects. Six hundred points, which I think probably everybody's driven down by the library now and seen that fantastic outcome, I think, in our community. And then we have another project over at Fremont and North Manhattan, which will either start late this year, early next year. So in total, though, we are providing to the city of Manhattan nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. On six hundred points, that equated to fifty-seven percent of the cost of that street project, was funded with federal and state transit dollars. Our piece of the Fremont-North Manhattan project will equate to about twelve percent of that project. The points project was five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, and the Fremont project will amount to three hundred and forty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars. So the shelters themselves that are at six hundred points, and it will be at Fremont-North Manhattan, those are funded with a separate grant. So this project was concrete and asphalt. It was improving pedestrian access and making ADA improvements, among other things. But I just wanted to share that with you, that that is a partnership that we've had with the city of Manhattan. We also have looked back over the last ten years, and during that time, the city of Manhattan has provided nine hundred and eleven thousand, seventy-three dollars to Flint Hills Ata Bus in that time. So if you want to go ahead. We have a big ask this year. No two ways around it. We're asking for a big increase in funding. One of the things that I think we hear from time to time is, you know what? I saw an empty bus. Seeing an empty bus is not a reliable indicator of efficiency or effectiveness because I will tell you, you will always see an empty bus. You will see empty buses. Any transit system in the country has peak hours of operation and non-peak hours. Our demand-response buses are traveling across Manhattan all the time, picking people up, dropping them off. That's not how we determine effectiveness and efficiency. So I did want to share with you, these are our top three most utilized routes in Manhattan, excluding K-State services. Route one, route four, and route five. So in your packets, you have some more information about ridership. Our fixed route services have increased by thirty-two percent. Our demand-response services have increased by forty-four percent. Ten percent of our trips on demand response are involving passengers who are utilizing wheelchairs. And we've also done some survey work recently on our ridership. Sixty-seven percent of the people who are riding the buses have zero household vehicles, and over half of them are using the services to go to work, to go to school, and to purchase groceries. This year, we're expecting to transport approximately a hundred and ninety thousand rides total. That's not where we were before COVID, but that is our reality today as we rebuild from the pandemic. So let's jump into our funding request. We're asking for two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars, and that is about four point nine percent of our total budget. But here's what we do with the money that you invest in public transportation. We leverage it to bring in one point two seven million dollars in federal funds that allow us to continue to operate our services, that allow us to purchase goods and services in the community, that pay our wages to our employees who live in Manhattan, and we are promoting, supporting, and contributing to economic development. Again, from your fact sheet in your packet, we've estimated that our riders who go to Walmart are generating approximately fifty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars in sales tax. We've also estimated that eighty-seven percent of our total trips are directly a benefit to the local economy. Our employees who live and work in Manhattan were paid nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in wages, and we purchased two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in fuel, and we spent two hundred thousand dollars in goods and services in FY22. So we are contributing to the mission and the goal in the community of supporting, contributing to, and improving economic development. So let's talk about beyond next year. We have some conversations, starting with city staff, about additional street projects that we could participate in. Now, I will tell you that there are a number of competitive grants from the Federal Transit Administration that we could go after for various infrastructure projects. But allocated directly to Ata Bus, we're currently sitting on about five million dollars in unspent allocations. Our annual allocation is about one point three million dollars. And we frankly are being limited in our ability to invest that money in the community because of our challenges to meet our local match. So it impacts what we may or may not be able to do with future street projects, but we really want to be able to spend this money effectively and work in concert with the city's goals with regard to construction. So in conclusion, yes, we're asking for a lot of money, but we have given back to the city of Manhattan directly more money than you've given to us in the last ten years. We think that we have been a good partner. We are good stewards of the tax dollars, and we think we've built a very good relationship with you, and we appreciate deeply the support that you are providing to us and to the citizens in Manhattan who rely so heavily on public transportation. I would stand for any questions that you have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anna, Daphne, anybody?
Yeah, it's like a little more explanation of why a hundred and five percent increase. What's the, I mean, you know, obviously, that's the questions we'll get. You're going to, you're going to double the money that's going to go there. Why all of a sudden are we getting such, I mean, we heard, not, you know, stagnation with a, with local funds and this and that, but why, why do we have to more than double the amount?
Right. So about sixty-five percent of our budget is wages, and like everybody else, we had to increase our wages at a rate that normally we would never have done before in order to sustain our employees. We have seen a significant increase in the cost of parts to replace vehicle, to repair vehicles when they break down. And we've seen a significant increase in fuel as well. I will tell you that last year, we eliminated one route for non-productivity. Route two went away. And we are evaluating our services currently in terms of can we sustain what we're doing today? We also, I will tell you, unrelated to our budget request, but K-State has also reduced its support as well. So when we have either stagnant growth or reduced support and rising costs, it equates to a significant increase in our ask of all of our jurisdictions. We've asked everybody, Potawatomi County, Riley County, Gary County, Junction City, city of Manhattan. We've asked everybody for an increase in funding.
How, how much was the K-State reduction?
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
Was that for, are you guys eliminating some of the free rides from Agaville or something because of that? Or how, how is that going to affect your routes and such?
So we, we still have services on campus, and K-State's continuing to be the funder for those. City of Manhattan does not provide any of the funding for services on campus. They were providing funding directly to support citywide fixed routes. And that's essentially go, probably, not certain yet. We're still working with the university, but that may go away. The students will have to start paying the fare again, if that's what transpires.
Off, for off-campus trips?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
They have been just showing their K-State ID.
Yes.
They could ride free.
Student faculty and staff.
Yeah.
Yes.
So essentially, about seventy-five thousand dollars of this increase is directly related to KSU not funding that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Uh, we would still be asking for a significant increase.
But would you be asking, would seventy-five thousand come off of this increase if they were giving you seventy-five thousand?
No.
You would still ask us for the same amount, even if they were giving you seventy-five thousand? You'd still ask us for the same amount even if they were giving you seventy-five?
Yes.
Thousand? I mean, I understand those other increases in costs, but I mean, we just had a rough-and-tumble session with the police department to keep them down to six and a half percent, and they were, I mean, pretty emotional in that room. So to say these are inflation and operating in salaries for a hundred percent increase in saying you'd ask for that even if you have the seventy-five from K-State is pretty tough to swallow. What, what are you getting back? Are you just now doing your rounds with the other counties and, and such and seeing what you're getting there? Are you asking them for a hundred percent increases as well?
It's varied somewhat from each jurisdiction. I don't know yet. The only one I know for sure is Potawatomi County. It's a much smaller ask. We're doing a lot less for them, but it's, they approved our budget request, which is.
From a percentage standpoint, was it?
Twenty percent.
Twenty, so there is a twenty and we're at a hundred and five percent. Is Riley County, are you asking them for?
We're asking them for a significant increase as well, and I don't know yet whether they will.
Because that would be, I'd be very interested in seeing what the others are contributing and to see if that's, you know, proportional. It's similar, like when we had the Technical College, we were really asking them to see who else is putting skin in the, in the game for this thing, because obviously, we had a big institution who said, you know, the value wasn't there to them.
Right.
And now we're looking at.
One thing I would say about Riley County is they do provide a lot of in-kind service to us as well. Our building is on, is leased from Riley County from Public Works. We are on the county network. They provide that in-kind service to us there as well. So that's a significant addition to, it's an in-kind contribution, but it's money that we're not having to spend that we otherwise would have to be.
Could you clarify also the K-State piece? It's, is, it's my understanding, it's the Student Governing Association allocation?
So we don't have a.
Students have given the K-State money in the past or committed to it, or was it the administration?
We've been funded through parking and housing and dining predominantly. There have been over the years, some other departments that have provided funding, but that's the, that's the basis of where our funding comes from. We did talk this year to SGA, had some pretty serious conversations about a student tuition fee. That's ultimately where we want to go. We asked for a ten dollar per student per semester fee, which would have amounted to, I think, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars. So that would have enabled us to put some amenities on campus, to do some various other things, and to support the citywide fixed routes. They are a significant user of the system. We got further along in that conversation than we ever have in the past. And I've told Daphne, who led that effort, that we will come back like a bad penny until they, until they are able, ready to provide us with that funding. We did not succeed this year, but as I say, we'll be back. That ultimately is the goal, is to have that funded by the students.
I thought it was, I thought it was student fees, that the students at one time recognized the value of it.
When we provided the Safe Ride Service, that was provided, funded by the students.
Thank you.
Question for staff. I think it's all tapped out, but City University Fund or?
It's really at the discretion of the commission when we'll bring that back.
Well, when is there money there?
Well, recently, we've talked about our, our lease at headquarters. So we'll have some options for you to consider, probably in the next thirty to sixty days before they take that to the Board of Regents. It will impact that fund. And it should give you all a little bit more discretion in, in terms of what we do with some of that funding today. But we're, we're still negotiating through those terms, but I do think you're going to have a little bit more discretion there. One thing I was going to ask, Anne, does it, does it matter the timing of which the funds could be given or allocated to ATA?
So our fiscal year actually is six-thirty. So it's a little different than your, than your calendar year. So we have some flexibility.
With the two projects that you recently contributed towards, close to a million dollars, as we move forward, I, I don't know if the commission's open to this, but it could be part of a funding package. So as we bring projects that are eligible for federal funds, and they can leverage those federal funds through our projects, it could be a way to recognize that. So you get a half million dollars from the ATA to help with a project, and we match that with two hundred and fifty K, or whatever the ask is for that year. It's us recognizing their dollars are coming into our project. They're offsetting a debt component that we have to pay for over time. We give, we basically award cash back to the ATA for that leverage of the federal dollar. It's significant, obviously, in the last two projects. I don't know how successful you feel like you'll be in the future, but it could be a way to, to approach the funding in terms of how much we can leverage from the federal government.
Do, do we have, we don't really have any projects identified right now in particular that we might maybe?
There, there's a two or three conversations I've got going on right now. So I think Public Works has some ideas of things that we might be able to do.
It, it saves us in the long term from a debt perspective. We obviously use sales tax and a lot of other revenue streams in our bonded interest fund. I think there's a way we could craft this and approach it to where, as much as they leverage from the feds, offsetting some expense for us, could be a way to match and, and fund them in the future.
Well, I definitely like that. Really want to look into that. That could be a win-win. Still want to see what the City University Fund could do, and still want to see what the others are kicking in.
We're just currently carving off about a two hundred and thirty thousand out of the City University Fund. We, we basically rotate that to the general fund to compensate us for fire services on campus. And we're talking about putting that back in the City University Fund.
Okay, great. I don't, yeah, because we sure don't want to diminish that, the money that you've brought to the table on those two projects. And so there, there should be some reward in there, I would.
And the idea that there's more that you can do. I know you work closely with the, the MP, Metropolitan Planning Organization. You're a part of that team and that advisory steering committee group, MPO team. And so I know that the federal funds that you leverage are significant.
Well, and I'll tell you too, and, and we've invited city staff to participate. We're doing two studies. One of them is kind of starting to look at electric vehicles, electric infrastructure. I can tell you that yesterday, Topeka Metro was awarded over seven million dollars for electric infrastructure and some vehicles. And it's a competitive grant.
Sure.
But there's billions of dollars out there. How do we, how does the city, the MPO, K-State, whoever, how do we work together, leverage funds, make the right choices for our community? That's the thing I'm really worried about. I don't want some million-dollar bus going up and down Points Avenue if we don't have a good plan in place to sustain it over time. So how do we work together? And I know that on the FTA level, that's a, that, they want the communities to come together and work together. Our other study that we're getting ready to do is going to be looking at our overall services, at our technology that we utilize, and are we being as efficient and effective as we possibly can? So that includes looking at microtransit. How do we potentially look at areas of town that are never going to be able to support a route, but maybe a microtransit alternative is a better fit? So those are things that we really need to be looking at. So I, we're looking forward to those, and we really, you know, we want to be good partners and want to move forward and, and bring some of this money to Manhattan.
We've talked about electric vehicles and the fact that we do not have, we don't have fast charging.
We don't have the rapid charge.
Rapid char, right word, rapid charging. And I, I've been seeing you working with, with ATA and the Metropolitan Planning. I know you've just had a briefing.
Jared's going to be doing a study. He's sitting on our committee. I'm going to sit on his committee. So it's like, let's work together.
Well, and the hotel, I mean, Mr. Everett has talked about the need for that. And so they can't afford to put in a charging unit like that either, so.
So if I was able to charge buses at the hotel,
Yeah.
I could put charging stations at the hotel.
He's thinking of his patrons, but
Right.
Charging is charging. Charging is charging.
So I think there's a lot of opportunity.
Lots of room for brainstorming and ideas.
The other component I would just throw in there is our, our recent ADA report. A lot of what ATA and Anne can bring to the table are helping with pedestrian access in certain areas. So it's another project-by-project way to start chipping away at some of those deficiencies we have in our community.
Yep, exactly.
Anne, you've got, on page twelve of your audit, shows the service contracts that we issued for twenty-two. I don't know how those compare to twenty-three, but obviously, in twenty-one, you went from two hundred and ninety-seven to seven hundred and twelve. And it shows the other participants, you know, the City of Manhattan isn't the highest. Actually, Gary County contributed a hundred and twenty-seven thousand in twenty-two. So I think it does show good leverage of other, other entities that are participating.
I'm all about return on investment, and if they're, if we're getting a fantastic return for the money that we're putting into it, I'm, I'd like to see how we can work out something like that.
Yeah, I think that's the best part of the briefing. You know, people send us notes all the time, why are we spending all this money, a hundred percent increase? But to highlight the fact that you've been able to leverage that, that's made a difference on the middle levy when we're talking about construction projects of that number. And that shows a good return on investment, because we'll probably never say, change that perception that the buses are empty. I hear that all the time. You know, you, you covered that quite well. But, but, but it's, it's, it's a point that you got to have some ammunition to say, okay, does this make sense? On the surface, to me, it does. We're leveraging that kind of money. We're getting a good return on our investment. And the money's coming out of economic development anyway. It's not property tax.
Right.
You know, which is something I worked on years ago, because to me, that made sense. And I think there is a, a direct economic development return, you know, that's pretty clear. I talked to people at Florence, you know, a lot of folks there ride the bus to work. And so a number of people have given me, you know, feedback on that that said, hey, this is worthwhile. Even M A T C, I think, they sent us a letter saying that was very important, you know, to their operations. And so, and so that was a great part of that briefing. Well done.
Thank you.
Jason, if we were, you were to get the, the deal that you were talking about and do it with those funds, and we can work out the timing, then that would come out of that, right? Wouldn't come back out of economic development.
It could come out of the seventy percent on the ECO Devo, or it could come out of bonded interest.
Right. So I mean, gives us some options, and if we get a little City University, because, you know, we keep committing this ECO Devo to a lot of different things. So if we can shift or lower that amount that's coming out with these other strategies, I think that would help us out quite a bit.
This has been a valuable discussion, to hear all the possibilities, because I am also concerned about the riders and the low-income people who don't have cars. And I listened to your stats on the number of patrons that don't have vehicles. And the elderly, and even I'm pleased that the children in the community can ride the bus free to go to the pools in the summer, which helps the city with patrons at pools.
In the first week that we had that partnership with Parks and Rec, Daphne took fifty passes and they gave them all away in the first week. So we're really excited about that.
All right. Well, thanks, Anne, Daphne. We'll, don't forget your poster, and we will.
You sure you don't want to keep it?
Maybe, maybe, maybe put it in the lobby. There you go. Okay, Rena, let's continue.
That concludes the seven agency requests. Are there any other questions? Because the next slide is related to the community funds.
I just want to make a comment that, you know, these seven agencies, none of this affects your property tax. And I think that's the point everybody watching out there needs to understand, because we've done over the years allocations, which I hope we continue, of the transient guest tax, and, and I think it's excellent use to use it for Aggieville DMI. I don't think anybody can, can say that doesn't bring in outside visitors. I think the Wolf House made a case, twenty-five percent of theirs are, you know, not city residents, so that's good use of it. Still not sure about Manhattan Art Center. I, I'd be, it'd be nice if they would provide some statistics and say, okay, how many people outside the city come in to justify using it, but, but I still think that's good use of it. And then the ECO Devo Fund for, you know, ATA and MAC, M A T C, seems to make sense as long as we don't overcommit it, as John said. So, so I think that's solid, but I just want everyone out there to understand that by, by redoing the budget over the years, so that these things were funded, not with property tax, it has had an impact on your individual property tax. I think in two thousand and eleven, almost all of these were funded from property tax. When I first got elected to the commission, so I've been happy to see us slowly but surely move these into other little pockets of money and fully fund them, and we didn't reduce services, but we reduced your property tax.
All right.
I'd like to also, for later on, a discussion later on, when we start talking about sources of funding, I'd still like to make the case that we need to track and be collecting the transient guest tax on short-term rentals. It's only fair to the hotels who have, financially have to make that, collect that money. And it's not fair that people, that some bypass that, and, and we don't have the benefit of collecting that tax.
So we, I think I reported last time.
I know you say Airbnb does it, but there are others. I'm just saying, we're not collecting it. And we don't, we're not doing, I think I, I read somewhere that the risk reduction doesn't track short-term rentals. And so I'd like, if, if community development is going to be the point at which all short-term rentals are approved through the conditional use or whatever, then they need to be the one that track how many do we have. But I think that's valuable information for us. And, and there's a fiscal note on how much people pay in transient, how, they should be paying in transient guest tax. So anyway, just, that's what I want to talk about when the time comes. Is this the time? Okay.
I think we want to move on, but I think, well, if we were to look at that, it's one of those things, it's the juice worth the squeeze. Because if we're collecting so much from Airbnb that we're looking at such a minor amount, it was going to cost us money to, to do that versus get us any.
You can always put that on a future agenda, but I think last time we talked about it, we figured out that the administrative workload of collecting it was greater than the revenue we take in. I think we dropped it, if, if my memory serves me right.
Yeah, we had, we had that discussion. The cost, if you want to go into a licensing program, and the, the, the people needed to be able to, that you hire to administer a licensing program and then enforce those provisions can add a lot. Some communities are doing it, no question about it. Some are collecting and not enforcing. So there's lots of different ways that can do that. I think I reported last time of the transit gas tax proceeds, was it twenty-five percent of that revenue was attributed to transient, or to short-term rentals?
It's seven. So we take in about two point two million in transient gas tax, and seven percent of that comes from VRBO, Airbnb. So it's really above that, that you're talking about hiring people to make sure those people are paying. So a hundred and forty thousand dollars of two point two million is being generated today. How much more are you going to squeeze out of the people who aren't registered? And how many people are you going to have to hire to go track that down?
So, but we're getting a hundred and forty thousand already.
Correct.
There you go.
I think there's a way, I mean, it's just like dog licenses. We can't enforce dog licenses either. But we have a requirement that you're supposed to register your dog. I just think we need a policy that short-term rentals need to be registered.
We, we have that. We have that.
Okay.
We have the policy. We don't have the enforcement. We have the policy.
We don't even have a mechanism to track how many we have. I mean, that's, you know, we're, anyway.
All right, Community Funds Support Advisory Board?
Jared.
If that's where we're at.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Our Community Support Funds Advisory Board has met a couple of times now. We've had a point where we're going to be approving some bylaws here soon that'll come back before you. But we are intending, after our July fifth meeting, to open up applications. but we are intending, after our July fifth meeting, to open up applications for requests from the, what you would previously call the Social Services Fund, that is, has been historically a general fund allocation, as well as the special alcohol portion. So we're looking to open applications to the community for agencies to apply here on July seventh, and we'll keep that application period open for thirty days, similar to how we previously have done. The shift that we have this year is we're doing this later in the, the game. Typically, I think some of these agencies would be coming to you tonight, after the recommendation has already been provided to you, and kind of making their case. We're doing it a little bit differently, where you all tonight are going to give city administration feedback on the two thousand twenty-four funding allocation to the board, related to general fund allocation, as well as special alcohol. We'll relay that to the board and agencies as we open up applications, so that when our board is considering all those applications, they know exactly what the city commission has allotted in the two thousand twenty-four budget, and they're not playing a guessing game as to how much money's going to be available, and how much they need to, or maybe need to, or maybe don't need to cut when they are recommending funding for agencies. So I have historical numbers presented to you on this slide from the Social Services Advisory Board previously, and the funding you provided from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-three. As you can see, in two thousand twenty-three, you provided five hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. That was spread across about twenty or so, fifteen, twenty agencies. So are you looking in two thousand twenty-four to keep that flat? Or I have presented options from a two to ten percent increase, if you're looking to increase that allotment for the Community Support Fund Advisory Board to utilize. So we can start with the, the Social Services Fund portion first, because Special Alcohol Fund is a little bit different. That is created by the Special Liquor Tax from the state of Kansas, and we used a forecasted amount based on previous proceeds, receipts that we received in previous years. So as you can see here, in two thousand twenty-four, we're projecting five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to come in from the Special Liquor Tax. It is a fund that has, has a healthy beginning fund balance, because we have, we exceeded projections in past years. So a, at a minimum, city administration is going to recommend you allot five hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars in special alcohol funds to that fund for two thousand twenty-four applications. If you want to provide more from the cash balance, you certainly can, or you, you can use that for other purposes, of course, within reason, within the Kansas statute on how you can use this money for drug and alcohol prevention, education, intervention.
Well, I like the, the idea. I promoted the idea before of like point nine mils of last year's value, or whatever a mill was, six hundred thousand or something. And so what was the magic number for, for this current year we're in? Using the, sort of the year before, we can get that number faster than waiting for the valuation to come out June first from the county and the, all that stuff. So a mill for, for this year was about what?
Let's get to interject. Mayor, I know you're trying to put it to a mill, but we're saying, for example, six percent over the last year. We just do a dollar and.
Yeah, that's fine. I, I'm just curious as to what would that be? Would it, is, is it closer to point eight-five mils? Is it point seven-five? If, if we could just kind of.
I think six thirty-three.
So six thirty-three times. Okay, let's just see. Let's, talk amongst yourselves for a second here.
The eight percent.
Do you want to base this off a mill?
The eight percent would be the nine, ninety percent of that.
That's kind of what I was thinking. If a six thirty-three, then it times point eight-five mils. Whoop, that's not it. That's point eight, six thirty-three times point eight would be five hundred and six. So point eight is, is too low. Six thirty-three times point eight-five would be five thirty-eight, and that would be like a twelve thousand dollar increase, which is only two, over last year's five twenty-six. So that's why, that's why I was thinking the point nine of six thirty-three would be five, six, now it falls pretty much at five sixty-nine.
I mean, with me, I just want to go six percent over where the last year dollar.
Let's see what that, see, five twenty-six times six percent.
That'd be this, this bottom row that I have for you right here. I've taken twenty twenty-four, and I've increased it by two percent, four percent, six percent, eight percent, or ten percent.
Yeah, thirty-one thousand more, which would be the five fifty-seven. I was just gonna say, I'm, 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 go ahead, Rena, but I was gonna hope to find something that we sort of could use as a benchmark going forward.
Right.
Just so we could predict something early. Go ahead.
I believe this year, right Rebecca, we're estimating six ninety-seven as the valuation.
He was asking about last year.
I know, but I'm just saying, if we're using the same methodology, six ninety-four. So it would be about that six percent amount, if you're using the same point eight factor.
Because that's because we have a nine point five percent valuation increase, so that mill is going up. So I wouldn't, you know, want to get the, the same mill as before, else we're going up nine point five percent.
Yeah, it's, the valuation is going to be high like that every year.
Yeah, that's, that's why, we're comfortable just with a dollar number, and we can just, and we give it to them, and there's that.
Yeah, that, that's my thought, because this is the only item that is directly related to property tax. Comes out of the general fund, so people can say it's a property tax item, and, and I can see a six percent increase. I think that's reasonable. Any more than that is not. And the other thing is, you know, the other guidance would be if we give them just flat dollar amount, which I think is what we agreed to, then the board knows they've got what five hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred sixty dollars to allocate. And then they need to take a real hard look at, you know, my, my thought is, if you add an agency, you should drop an agency. Because, you know, there's an unlimited number of groups out there that want money, and, and we've got to prioritize and focus on those that are, that are giving the city the biggest bang for the buck, you know, clearly things like the emergency shelter and the crisis center that directly impact police operations, and, you know, tho- those things are absolutely vital. And, and so we can't just go crazy, you know, funding everybody that's got a great idea out there, so.
The, the thing about this year, we, we were, because of the time crunch, we were gonna just give them a, a number and have them go figure it out over the summer and fall. We, we could just change that as to be the modus operandi going forward, instead of having them do all this stuff early and then bring us a number. Just change the schedule. Give them a number, and then they'll figure out where to divvy it up.
No, I'm, I'm totally there.
I wasn't sure if we just wanted to do that this year, or if we wanted to make that new way going forward.
I think that's the best way, just do it every year, because then it's so simple. They just know exactly what the number is.
Tell us about that.
And they can go forward.
Our board is under the impression that we're going to continue to operate in this schedule and timeframe, and we'll open up applications now a little bit later in summer, so we have a firm number from you all.
Good, I, I like. Yeah, I was, wanted to make sure it wasn't just a one-shot deal. It was, it was a new way of doing it.
Because of our timeline, we anticipate coming back to you all in either late October or first meeting in November with that funding recommendation. So this will be, the two thousand twenty-four budget has already been passed. If five fifty-seven's the number, that's already plugged in there, and then all we're doing is coming to you in October and saying, here's the recommendations. And there isn't a, a debate as to adding more or less, and the percentage has already been allocated.
So everybody okay with five five seven, or five five seven, five sixty?
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Fair, and it fits within the idea of a six percent increase max for city operations.
Look at us being agreeable. What's, what's up with this? Okay.
Do you all have any feedback related to the Special Alcohol Fund and the cash balance? Do you want to keep it at five fifteen?
I want to bring up one thing on that, because I, I still think we should fund the coresponders through this account, because it'll affect the RCPD budget and property tax. And the coresponders play a huge role in doing this, but, you know, Mark had mentioned before, you know, everybody was afraid that if we did that, we were going to cut the amount of money that was allocated to other agencies, and that was never the intent. What I'd like to see us do is go with the number that the staff recommends there. Was it five fifteen? Uh, essentially, and then see at the end of the year how much excess taxes are left in the beginning balance. If there's a sufficient amount there to fund the coresponders, then do that upfront next year. But the money would already be there, so it wouldn't be that case of, well, it's not guaranteed, because the, the tax amount would fluctuate. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I, I don't disagree with what you're thinking about, but the, one of the concerns that we heard was that the, that are we statutorily meeting the requirement of the coresponders? The comment that was made by Pawnee was that they're, they're not, a mental health issue isn't necessarily a drug and alcohol.
Yeah, we would have to make sure we do that. Legally obligated to do that. But the way I read that, that was just a red herring. They were all afraid we were going to take their money away from them, and they weren't listening to what the proposal was. And so they drag out all these excuses why not to do it, and one good one is always to have a legal reason. So what I'm saying is have the legal department check into it. I know we did it years ago, and nobody cried about it. Worked fine first time. So what's changed? Nothing. It's just how you interpret it, and if you have to go send a thing to the A G at the state and say, hey, is this legal? To get his opinion, then let's do it. And if it's not, of course, then we just can't do it. But, but I don't, I don't want to just, you know, shelve the idea, because everyone worries a lot about their property taxes. I get beat up on that constantly, and every time you come up with an idea of how to perhaps reduce it, you know, everybody's got to throw, you know, kerosene on the fire. So, you know, let's just see if we can make it happen legally, and the intent is to fund it without hurting any of the current agencies that are getting money out of the Special Alcohol Fund. I think that's a worthy goal.
I think that's a worthy goal. I, I like that, all right. Put your mic on.
Sorry. I think it's terribly important that we fund the, the drug and alcohol count, continue to fund at the high school. And that is a touch point for drug and alcohol counseling, and I think it's, it's pulling money for those two positions would be irresponsible. We're even getting extra money for opioid, for example. And I just want to be sure that we aren't pulling money that's going to cause harm in the program. I don't know about whose budget it is or not. I want our people in our community to be well-served, mental health-wise, drug and alcohol, counseling-wise, and so that's my, my point in pitch.
And I think that's what Winn's trying to do with that.
Yeah, well, I think I made it clear, everybody was worried we were going to pull that money, and I'm saying, absolutely not. We're not going to pull that money. What we're anticipating is with increased sales tax, there will be enough revenue coming in, and there'll be excess in the account to fund it next year. If that doesn't happen, then of course, we won't do it next year. But there's absolutely no intent to take any money away from, you know, Robin was worried about that from, you know, the, the mental health facility. No, that's not what I said.
Which brings us to the opioid settlement money. What, we've been collecting that and sitting on it.
We've.
Do we have a plan for that, or it's obviously there?
Yeah, we came to you all back in the spring with an idea of utilizing, doing R F A, request for applications for capital improvements for the use of those funds, drug and alcohol. It, it, it's the opioid, same, same kind of description that you can use special liquor tax, but there's a little bit difference. We've been waiting. We've gotten feedback from the Kansas Attorney General that we're going to get additional guidance on how to use those funds, so we've just kind of halted it. In addition to that, the state has opened up a big round of applications, so we wanted to allow our local groups to apply for that state funding before we came back with our local opioid money.
So you said capital funding stuff?
It's one-time money, so we didn't want to, like the Special Alcohol Fund, people come primarily to this board for operating funds. We're only going to get this opioid money once, so we want to, the idea that we came to you all with was a request for applications for any type of capital project.
Now, there's, there's one other thing for this Community Funds Advisory Board. We had been collecting, and it's not a huge amount of, of money on this water bill donation program, which, which is a great disappointment for me, that more people in the city don't add one dollar to their water bill, and that we'd have a huge amount of money there. And, and I think the, the previous board had taken that money and fenced it for capital improvements, be, because they, they, they said, okay, if you got something, you've got a bill that's not covered, you know, we can give you money out of that, so it's a, it's a minor account. My thought was, that might be a good place to put the opioid money. Just add it there, and then let, let this board say, fine, if somebody's got a capital improvement project for one of these social service agencies, then they can come and request that money, and then they'll have that pot to do it, and it would save some effort from city staff.
I'm not interested in having money from the opioid settlement be used for the dog program.
No, we have to be drug.
For any other program that, it, it needs to relate to drug or alcohol, or drugs actually. Yeah.
That is a requirement that would need to be used for such funds.
All right, what else you want to know about? So I, so, yeah, shoot for the five fifteen, I'm guessing.
We'll plug in this number for social services, and we'll plug, plug in five fifteen for special alcohol.
Just some feedback for that new board. One of the things that I want to take a look at, and then, you know, how much they can do this first round or not, is when they are looking at these requests to come in, especially if it is a recurring one with a group, are they able to show that their program is working? I mean, if it's the emergency shelter, that's a little tougher. You're just getting people, you're just reacting to it. But if it's something like reducing, you know, drug and alcohol cases, or mental health issues or whatever, are they showing improvements through their programs? Because, I mean, we should expect some results for the, for the money. If, if the situation's just getting worse, you know, are we funding the right thing, or is that the right program?
The application process includes questions related to, including measures on, are you trying to reach your goals?
I think that we'll have a lot of groups come forward and, or entities wanting funding. So I'm interested in funding the emergency shelter, the crisis center, those traditional programs that we offer, and the, you know, the drug and alcohol counseling. And then, if there's money left over, sharing it further would work, but not part of the core support in the community. I think we have a delicate balance here.
And then, and then, you know, they, they need to highlight, because I think it's not just the water bill thing. There's something on credit cards that Rich Jankovic set up that, that I don't know the mechanics of, but, but how much, you know, how much are we actually collecting? I, I think it's somewhere around thirty thousand?
Yes, so it's rebates from our purchasing card program
Right.
for annual collection, but then we also have a monthly collection for, through Commerce Bank for our ghost card payments, and so annually, it is about thirty thousand. We currently have about ninety-six thousand left in that fund to allocate for what we have been using for capital needs for those agencies.
Okay, ninety-six thousand, that, that's more than I thought, and then, and is the thirty thousand, is that all of it coming from the credit card? Or is, is some of that donations from the water bill?
Some donations from the water bill, but majority of it is from the rebate from the purchasing card.
Because I'd like to, I, I know that's going to take some extra time, but if somebody could pull how much we're actually getting for the water bills, because I'd like to, you know, advertise that and say, okay, if the city's really concerned about social services, why is it that we're only getting this little bit of donations through the water bill program? I think they could, you know, they could use some media attention, I think.
And just a follow-up question on that water bill. I had heard, and I don't know if it was correct or not, that with some of the billing issues with the city with the water bills, that people dropped off that, and they had to re-apply or reapply that in order to make that happen. Did that happen? Because if that happened, I think there's probably a lot of people that maybe still think they're giving, and they're not, and that could be part of that marketing campaign.
I think on average, we get a report from our I T department. It's about, been about two hundred to three hundred dollars a month that we've been receiving from the utility bills, and that was prior to payment is going into play. It's just been minimal participation.
Yeah, that's pretty, that's pretty minimum, two hundred dollars a month, and I've added fifty to my water bill every month to cover that, because I'm serious about it. I wouldn't expect anybody else to do that, but, because that's what I do with the city commission money. But, uh, 'cause that's what I do with the city commission money, is put it back in there. But, uh, that's, that's atrocious when you think about it. This entire city is only donating two hundred and three dollars or so a month for social services on their water bill? When a cup of coffee down at Flight Crew, you know, costs seven bucks? That's, uh, that's amazing to me, but I'd just like to see us publicize that. You know, rather than always go to the taxpayer well and say, let's raise property taxes. If you can afford it, add that dollar.
Jason, what were you gonna say, anything?
Oh, we can look into some of the recent things we've done in terms of being on auto pay, uh, whether or not that's even coming to anybody's attention. Um, and, and you may have been, you may be right, John. People may have been dropped off when we went to a system that, um, I don't get a paper bill. So it doesn't necessarily come, it may come to my wife as an email, I don't know, but it's, it's just overlooked by a lot of folks. So it might be a, a, a way we could entice or revive that campaign.
I know there were a num, I heard from a number of people who were stopping, uh, the way they were paying. And, but I don't know what's ever, that's a year ago. I haven't heard an update about, did, did we lose a bunch of people? Did they shift to another way? So please do.
We'll look into that.
Some information for us. That'd be great.
Yeah, I did have to re-enroll it because we did have some hiccups with that, but, you know, it's not that hard to do, just go do it.
Right, but I just think people don't, don't know they're not given anymore.
Alright.
They were getting notices.
We'll remind them. Okay, what else you got, uh, on there?
Um, just this last slide about upcoming work sessions. Um, July eleventh is a major work session. We need to pass the resolution on our revenue neutral rate. Last meeting, um, we presented the Raleigh County valuation, and then we received feedback from you all regarding a six percent, um, valuation, and that information is included in your packet. So we wanted to get some feedback from you all, and Jason can come forward too and talk about this. But about how we should proceed to prepare for that July eleventh meeting, so we can start preparing the documents as well.
We were gonna put a resolution on your July eleventh meeting. Uh, fifty-two mils roughly is where we're at today. We can publish it that, we could take it down to that six percent, fifty point, roughly five. I think it's over fifty point four. But those were the two that we kicked around. Whatever you wanna publish, obviously is a maximum. Once we publish that on the revenue neutral rate, then we'll come back in August and publish again on a, a mill levy that you all can agree to. Um, but we just gotta be careful when we publish these things. We can't go above them. We can go down, though.
Yeah, see, my, my intent, and you, you, you gave me a, a sheet on that with a fifty, roughly fifty mils. It was a six.
It's in the packet, too.
Yeah, six percent increase, and, and that's where I'm at. And, and I think we owe that to the taxpayers, because the appraisals went up, and everybody was screaming, they thought they were gonna get as much as a fifteen percent increase in their property tax. So we're getting enough revenue to maintain services. I haven't heard anybody say that we have to cut services. So this is our opportunity to roll that mill levy back, you know, to the, around the fifty level. And, uh, people are still gonna get an increase in their property taxes. I understand that. But at least it'll limit it to six percent, which is right around the inflation rate, and I'm not sure we can do any better than that.
Yeah, I'm good with the six percent.
I am too.
Okay.
There you go.
We'll likely have that on consent, then. Thank you.
Alright.
I actually think we need to talk about it every time. It's significant.
I, I said consent. We, we can move it to general.
You can still talk about it.
No. It bears talking about. It's the, the mill, setting the mill rate for the following year. That's, it's the biggest thing we do. It's the budget.
Thank you.
Alright, do anything else right now?
No, sir, there's just the rest of the calendar for the, um, work sessions. The chamber will come back on July twenty-fifth. We will have, um, departments come August eighth to talk about, um, the strategic plan and how we're moving along with that. And then August twenty-second, the utilities, those three will come forward with their, um, forecasts and any other requests. And then the fifth of September, public hearing on the revenue neutral rate. And then, um, the two thousand twenty-four budget and the second reading on September nineteenth.
Remind me about the chamber. I mean, we had a, a proposal from them in December, right? About, um, this year, so would we?
So that update.
They're an outside agency, but I'm just asking what.
So we have a contractual relationship with the chamber?
Right.
Uh, they, we contract with them to do C V B and,
Yep.
and economic development services, so it's a services contract.
Exactly.
They've requested the same amount as last year, as this year.
Alright, and this is their, this is the, their formal budget proposal?
Correct.
And they'll provide a quarterly update usually during that time as well.
Alright.
And the funding source for that is not property tax?
That's correct. It's all.
Transient.
Well, that's the other thing.
Eco-deal and transient.
Transient guest.
Alright, um, we will, knowing that the commission has been generally very agreeable to all requests tonight, if anyone would like to make some public comment, we will give you up to five minutes, speak one time. We're not gonna answer questions or debate you, but come on up if you'd like, sign in, state your name. And where you live, or what organization you're requesting to chat about. Or you can just sit there and be quiet. That's fine, too. Alright, we will close public comment and move on to the next item, which is the cemetery. Preliminary master plan review, and Mike got all dressed up to hang out with us, so looking good, buddy. You are too, even though your name's not Mike. Which one's that? Alfonso, yeah, the Parks guy.
Alright. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Alfonso Leva, Park Planner with, uh, Parks and Recreation. This evening, we're gonna talk about the, uh, the cemetery's master plan. You know, we, uh, we came to you back in, uh, uh, November of last year. Uh, started that conversation of, of, of updating the master plan. Uh, Jason, uh, myself, Mike, you know, we had that conversation started. Um, what we heard at that time, uh, from the government, governing body was you gave us permission, permission to explore the master plan. What we, what we also heard is that you wanted us to make sure that we were engaging the public, uh, the advisory boards and the stockholders, uh, in the community. Uh, what we also heard was that there was some desire to sell both properties, uh, at Sunset, uh, for the Sexton's House and the, the, the lot. Um, and then potentially use those funds for, for future maintenance needs. Uh, we also heard, uh, some concerns about selling or destroying the Cemetery Sexton's House. And, and there was some conversation about, um, the historic survey that was done up in that area a, a couple of years ago. And then we also heard, you know, could we build a small shop at Sunset to maintain those maintenance needs, and then invest heavily out at Sunrise? So that's kinda where we took it when we went to, um, uh, to, uh, take this out to the community. When we, when we started to visit out the, uh, the advisory boards and such. But before we get into that, I wanna make sure that we, let me make sure I have the right one pulled up. I did make, I did add one or two items into the presentation. Here we go. My little indicator worked. Alright, uh, we're gonna go through the master plan process in summary. I'll give you some of the community feedback that we heard. Uh, we'll look at the Sunrise Cemetery and, uh, Sunrise and Sunset Cemetery concepts. Uh, and then, uh, we'll dive into some of the, uh, the scenarios that I had in your packet, um, uh, for the Sunset, uh, maintenance. And then we'll finish off with questions and feedback. As I go through this presentation, um, I'll stop at each, each section and, and ask for if you have any questions, so whether we're at Sunrise or throughout those scenarios. Um, as, as we get through this presentation, I'd like us to keep the Cemetery Sexton House at the very end, 'cause definitely that's a bigger, bigger item. And really, what we don't wanna see is, we don't wanna see, um, uh, whether we keep the Sexton's House or sell it. We don't wanna see that derail this master plan process. So, um, alright, so we'll go from here into the master plan process summary. So after the meeting with, uh, with the city commission, we went out to the advisory board. Uh, we've been to them twice already. Uh, we, we went out in January and April. Uh, we'll be going to them here in July. Uh, carry on, uh, any feedback that we hear, uh, from, from this evening. When we were with them, we talked about a couple of options. Uh, we, we looked at potentially, you know, taking what we heard, uh, that evening in November. We took, uh, two options to the cemetery board, cemetery board, uh, of, of what we could do with the maintenance lot. Uh, you know, could it be inside of the cemetery? Could it be on the northern edge in Girl Scout Park by the water tower? Uh, we took that feedback, um, uh, to the cemetery board. Um, what we heard was there was, uh, uh, some concern about, uh, having the, the maintenance shop inside the cemetery itself. Uh, there was some concern about the additional, uh, traffic that would be generated, uh, from, uh, staff getting to and from, uh, the, the maintenance shop. And then, um, let's see. That's really what we heard that, that January, uh, from the, from the, uh, Cemetery Advisory Board. Uh, in April, what we heard, uh, we heard, uh, we, we took, um, some plans and concepts to this, to the cemetery board at that time. Uh, kinda fleshed out some of those options, because what we heard in January was they asked us to, to do a feasibility study. You know, could we keep the maintenance shop on the existing maintenance lot? Um, uh, do some, you know, tear that building down and then build something new? Uh, that was one of the items they wanted, uh, us to look at, really. So we did. We talked with, uh, Public Works, we talked with Community Development, you know, what would it take for us, uh, following our own, you know, uh, Manhattan Development Code, what would it take for us, uh, to redevelop that lot? And so I'll get into it a little bit further as we have plans up, uh, on, on what was discussed there. We then went into the, uh, Historic Resources Board. Uh, gave them a little update, uh, of, of this, uh, master plan, uh, moving forward. Uh, we had some questions. There weren't, uh, a whole lot of concerns or feedback at that time. I'm assuming it was probably because, um, you know, we, there still wasn't any definitive answer as to what was gonna happen with the Sexton's House. Later on, uh, we also, in an effort to engage the stake, stakeholders, uh, we were involved with the, uh, a neighborhood tour of, of the Sexton's House. But then we also engaged the Manhattan Riley County Preservation Alliance. Uh, so we had that group, and then we had the Landmark, uh, Landmark Water Tower Neighborhood, uh, who also wanted to, uh, get a tour of the Cemetery Sexton's House. That happened at the end of January. We had about twenty to twenty-five people attend. Um, I, I was even, there was even someone who had, I had talked about, uh, with, you know, there was interest in purchasing the Cemetery Sexton's House, uh, as well, um, at that point. Uh, there was a lot of questions about the house, but again, we just, you know, looking at what's on the deed and its restriction, we just didn't have that answer. Uh, there was others who were in attendance who wanted to make sure that we understood the historic value of the property. Uh, also, what we heard from some of the neighbors is there was some concern about, uh, about if, if we did build something new there, uh, how are we gonna build new, making sure that we keep in mind that this is in a, in a, in a neighborhood, a historic neighborhood, um, and wanna make sure that we're just not placing a, a metal box, you know? Make sure that we design within ten, if we were to, uh, to keep, uh, a new maintenance shop there at the existing maintenance lot. You know, so is there a way that we could screen using vegetation? Is there a way that we could keep the same, uh, type of exterior as what's, uh, there now? So that's some, some of the items that we heard from the, uh, from the neighbors in that area as well. Then we went to Park Board in, uh, February, uh, talked with them, uh, kinda gave them the same update, what we heard from the, uh, Cemetery Advisory Board, what we heard from, uh, H R B. Um, uh, we talked about, uh, you know, when we were talking with the cemetery board, really the two options that we were really moving forward with was, do we keep the existing maintenance lot there at Sunset? Or do we go into, uh, Sunset Cemetery over on the western edge? And that's what we took to, uh, Park Board. Uh, reason why we went also to Park Board is 'cause of that option that we talked about, you know, could we go into Girl Scout Park? Uh, and so that would then involve Park Board at that time, if, if we were gonna move forward with that presentation, I mean, with that option. Not a whole lot of feedback, uh, since we were kinda getting away from, from that option. Uh, but we do plan to go to Park Board, uh, again, uh, next month, uh, to, to carry forward any, any kind of new feedback that we hear tonight. We also made an effort to, to get just overall, general, uh, uh, community input as well. Uh, you know, we went out to the, uh, to the Mercury, put in an advertisement about the, uh, open house that we held, uh, there in March. Uh, we were on K Man Radio advertising the master plan, uh, open house as well. Uh, about, uh, approximately ten or so people, uh, attended the, the event. We heard some of the same, uh, concerns, uh, through, throughout the, throughout the open house. Uh, we heard, uh, you know, from some of the neighbors over on the northern side, you know, uh, if, if we put in the, um, if we put in, uh, a new maintenance shop over on the western edge of Sunset, you know, what, what is that gonna do for, you know, what typical, um, maintenance commotion type of, of scenario out there? Uh, would that be disturbing to not only the neighbors, but then also just to the, to the cemetery itself? And to this day, I mean, I'm, I'm making sure I, I remain in contact with, uh, members of the neighborhood and with the, uh, with the Preservation Alliance. Um, but work closely with Linda, uh, and, and Bruce McMillan, uh, through, throughout this process. And then moving forward, we'll, like I mentioned, we'll, we'll go to Park Board, we'll hit, hit up Cemetery Advisory Board, uh, in July. And then, um, we rescheduled, uh, I was gonna be going to the Historic Resources Board this month, um, but since we moved the, uh, this work session, I bumped it over to July. And then ultimately, we look to, to, to hopefully come back to you late summer, early fall for a, uh, an acceptance of the final master plan document. So this next section, um, uh, well, before I move on, is there any questions on any of the process that, that we've been through so far?
No, I just, you know, I think we talked with legal, that, that Sexton's House and everybody's concerned. I, I understand that, you know, the deed, there's some real complications with that thing. And, and that really should be considered in the master plan. I was all for selling it, you know, it can go on the historical register, but that looks to me like it's so complicated that it's gonna take years for that to happen. Is that, is that a proper appraisal?
Yeah, I think, uh, at least at this point, uh, is it possible? It is, uh, but it, it'll take a couple of years to figure out how to do that. And, and for the process to run, uh, with any potential error and it's, it's a.
Sounds like we didn't follow the contract from the jump, according to that memo that was.
Long time ago.
Yeah, like in nineteen-ten, we didn't follow it as soon as we did it. This is a city. So, I mean, so either we lose it or we sell it.
Yeah, it, it, it just looks to me that, you know, the amount of effort it's gonna take to do that, that the master plan probably oughta just consider keeping both properties. I mean, I was hard over on selling it. I thought it was the right way to go. But you start looking at all these legal complications and errors, and, and you gotta do this to that. Uh, we may need to relook and figure out, okay, we got, we got a maintenance shop and we got a Sexton's House. How are we gonna repurpose them so that we get some value out of them? And then, and to me, that's the direction we oughta go right now.
But maybe, did I misread it? Do we have an issue with the maintenance shop?
No, we, we own that property outright with no restrictions.
Right, so I, I would.
It's just it's undersized, ideally, and I think.
I mean, we have issues with it.
It would need to be renovated.
Uh, we just don't have, but there's no property issue.
I'm not interested in selling the Sexton House, because I, we have, uh, an entity gave us that property years ago. It seems to me, you know, we want the trust of the public, and it's not appropriate to break that trust. Um, and so we need to find a way to, to, um, can, to, how to use it and stay within those guidelines, whatever that means.
I would just say there's additional research that, that certainly could be done. Um, it's a exhaustive process for that. Um, but I would also say that I, I, I don't, I would not recommend that we move forward with using it as it was intended to use. It's not adequate for that. I know Mike would have an opinion on that, so, you know, what? It's not adequate for that. I know Mike would have an opinion on that, so, you know, what we use it for, I'm not saying we need to transfer ownership, but to, to use it for its intended pers- purpose is not really realistic. So, working with everyone and all of the...
Currently, we're, we're letting it deteriorate year after year, and that's not appropriate either. We're not being good stewards.
But what Ron's referring to, I think, the original documents, and they were done so long ago, talks about us maintaining records in there, a bunch of other things.
A vault and all that.
And, and a vault, and, and that's just not practical. I mean, it's just, that's, that's just ignorant. So that's why I say we need to repurpose it, but that, that means, you know, maintaining the building, not, uh, you know, not destroying it. And, and I think we can figure out some legitimate uses for it.
Well, I think the agenda said it will, let's not get distracted with that.
We've already been distracted. That discussion's over now, right?
Move on to Sunrise Cemetery.
So, yeah, Sunrise Cemetery, a little bit of context, uh, north is to your, to your right, uh, K-T coming in, uh, K-18 into Fort Riley Boulevard, uh, Stag Hill over on the northern edge of, of the property. It's about seventy-six acres, uh, purchased back in the, back in the sixties. During this process and, and picking Mike's brain, I mean, this, this gentleman here, being with the city with over forty years, knowing cemeteries and everything, he's like, oh, we got about two hundred, three hundred years worth of cemetery. Uh, if you look in the, in the master plan document, I did the calculations there of what we have, and we have about two hundred and eighteen years worth of cemetery for the city. Uh, we have, we have the land. Um, and, uh, I just wanna thank Mike in, in helping with, uh, with this process. Uh, it's made it, uh, uh, an experience for me, uh, moving forward, and, uh, definitely we're, we're proud to, to get something that we could, uh, that the, that the city could utilize moving forward. So for Sunrise Cemetery, uh, once we got the concept out, um, it was pretty straightforward when we went out to the advisory boards and, and other meetings. Um, we're, we're on a path, uh, that's, that's, uh, um, not a whole lot we could do. And I know at the, at the meeting itself, we talked about an option of could we put the, the maintenance shop and the offices further into the cemetery? So that we could, uh, kinda open up that area in the front. Um, it, it, it isn't just there. Um, there, there's some pros and cons to that, uh, whether you wanna know where you're going exactly, if you wanna talk to, uh, to staff for your burial needs. Uh, when we looked at the feasibility, really the biggest, the biggest hurdle there was, was utilities. It's about eleven hundred feet from this area into the, into the, into the property. Um, that alone was getting close to seven figures to, to, to do just for utilities. So pretty quickly, when we took that to the Cemetery Advisory Board, um, they agreed that, you know, maybe it's best to keep it where it's at, but maybe we do a little something different, and I'll, I'll show you here in the next, uh, slide before I, I, I move on. Um, currently, we do have columbariums there now. Um, those are more individual. Uh, they're sold in lots, and then in each of those lots, there's about four spaces that could be, uh, placed in those, in those sections. Um, we'll talk about columbariums later, uh, at Sunset potentially for, for a proposal. But anyways, we have, we have some areas plotted out for that. Um, right now, uh, this is just an open, an open space. We've talked about, uh, getting this plotted, uh, relatively soon. Um, this is the next section. This is the, the new road that was installed back in twenty-eighteen. Um, most of everything else was, uh, done back in the sixties and two thousand eight. Um, but, uh, there's a little bit of wear and tear, uh, and some of that road that's built back in the si- back in the sixties, but definitely before we, before we get into that, there at Sunrise, we definitely wanna do something up at Sunset, uh, for, for the roads out there. Um, but anyways, further for, for Sunrise, um, this is, uh, the existing natural burial area. It's actually more cut off here, but we try to maintain this more of a natural, uh, area here, and that, that, that involves a natural burial where there's no vault, um, biodegradable, um, uh, containers. Uh, I mean, it's pretty much just you in the ground. Uh, if this takes off, you know, is there a place where we could expand? It's further down that eastern edge. So a little bit more detail looking at the, keeping the existing layout. Uh, one of the things we did here is, you know, could we separate, uh, the office, uh, give a little bit more separation between the, the maintenance shop and the office? Uh, we saw, uh, well, currently, right now, the, um, the office is about in this area here, so it's right up to that maintenance shop in this maintenance lot area. So we're proposing here as a new office, a little bit down that hill, um, and, uh, and, and, and give a little bit more separation, look at, at creating some separation with vegetation in this area so that it isn't just you, you drive in and it's just a big old maintenance lot. Uh, you know, it's, it's obvious that this is the office, this is where you're gonna, uh, come in for your, uh, burial needs. Well, any questions on Sunrise Cemetery? All right.
So how big would the office be? It says thirty by forty and then the shop is thirty by eighty? And are we just talking metal buildings? Are we talking something that's can, uh, appropriate for a setting like this?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Um, I mean, right now, what we have out there, um, I believe is a converted farmhouse. It has some sort of character. It wouldn't just be, anything proposed, we wouldn't just want it to have just a metal building. Um, even, even the maintenance shop existing now, um, has some sort of finishes on the outside and such. Um, uh, for this bigger shop building, when you get into that, you might get into some higher costs. Uh, we do propose remodeling the shop, uh, as it is now, and there, there's definitely some, some items that need renovated. Uh, that was built back in the sixties as well. Um, but, uh, yeah, definitely looking at the character of the buildings and making sure...
We're gonna have two shops.
So with the future of Sunrise and where we, where we're at, uh, this is where definitely what we heard back from the discovering body back in, in November was, was, uh, additional shops, yeah.
There was also talk about putting the shop, um, up along the west border.
That's for Sunset, that's for Sunset. That was for Sunset.
I'm talking Sunrise.
Yeah, we're talking Sunrise.
Um, uh, along the west edge, but south of the existing graves. Uh, more, uh, uh, along the west border, point to that.
Over here?
No. Uh, you see where the graves are with the trees? It would be one of these two sections to the west of the top of the picture.
Out in this area?
No, down. See those two right under your pointer? One, and go to the right is two. We, we talked about, um, I, I'm just thinking that some of your equipment is a lot heavier and bigger and other that maybe, you know, uh, you don't, the mowers aren't, don't have to, uh, be up close to the shop, to the office. I'm just, uh, trying to think about what has to be in the, where the people come, the, where the public comes to make arrangements for, uh, for the cemetery burials, that the maintenance doesn't have to be front and center right there. It would be a more pleasant setting if some of the maintenance were at another spot, and I, that's just some feedback that I would give you.
Yeah.
Aesthetically.
But I think, you know, the way you've got that drawn out, there's enough separation there, and as you, as you mentioned, the utilities, the cost of running utilities out there just prohibits it, so, so I think this is a pretty good plan.
How far back from the office? Go back to the other picture. How far back from the office is the, uh, the building? That, I guess that's the separation I'm looking for, so you can consider that when you, uh, do it.
Yeah, uh, we're roughly about, uh, seventy-five to a hundred feet of additional separation that we can, than what we currently have now.
I, I just couldn't tell. Thank you.
All right, so if no any other questions for Sunrise, we'll jump right in into Sunset Cemetery. Uh, a little bit of context, um, north is, uh, up above to the, uh, to the top of the screen. Wildcat Creek is on your west side with, uh, quite a bit of, quite a bit of drop into that area. We do have some trails out here, uh, uh, that, that go around this area, um, to the southwest. Uh, the Sunset Zoo, the high school, Sunset Avenue, uh, Landmark Water Tower, um, Sexton's House, Girl Scout Park. Um, so just, just giving you an idea of some of the context in this area, so. Uh, one of the things I'd mentioned before is, you know, we have columbariums now out at, um, uh, at Sunrise, but we're also proposing some here at, uh, Sunset, uh, now. Uh, there's, uh, there's some, there's some fairly level spot out here to the south of Paisley Tower. Uh, but then there's also some over here in Block Nine where we, where we can't put, where we can't put any, any burials because of the rock in the area. So that would potentially be some additional, uh, columbariums, uh, spaces. Uh, here in the next couple of slides, I'll, I'll, I'll expand a little bit more on, on, on what, uh, what size of columbariums. Uh, they're, they're a little bit different than what we, than what we have over at Sunrise. Uh, additionally, we did, uh, in, in the document, we talked about the, the condition of the road. The last time that that was overlaid with asphalt was back in the nineties. Uh, you could see, uh, throughout the master plan document that I submitted in your packets as well, uh, there's quite a bit of, of, of areas that, that need some attention, so. Before we go out to Sunrise with, with some of the concrete that's been out there since the sixties, uh, you know, definitely we wanna, uh, uh, address, uh, some of the items here at Sunset. And we do talk about a phasing plan, uh, in the, in the master plan. And so, you know, as we talked about different scenarios, I mentioned it in the, uh, in the memo, uh, some of what we heard, some of, some internal conversation that we've had. Uh, scenario one, and we'll get into, uh, details a little bit later, scenario number one is the one that we presented to the cemetery board back in January. Uh, there's a little bit of area out here to the west of the Paisley Tower that's, that's, uh, heav- heavily vegetated. It's a flat area. There's a road there now. Um, in this scenario, there would be, uh, some additional improvements to the road to this connector here. Um, but, uh, overall, it's, it's, it's used right now as a, a place where, where, um, soil and such is maintained, piles of leaves, I believe, but. Um, scenario two, uh, we look at potentially collaboration with the zoo. The zoo right now, uh, needs some maintenance, uh, shop area. I had a conversation with Scott, uh, not too long ago, uh, you know, is, is this, uh, an opportunity, uh, to consolidate some of, some of, uh, those, uh, needs, not only for the cemetery, but then for the zoo? Uh, we'll, we'll look at that layout, the layout here in a little bit, a little bit as well. Uh, wanna bring to you, uh, scenario three, talk, had a conversation with, uh, Randy in, in Public Works, talk about the future of some of the facilities he has, uh, there, uh, uh, that are, are used for the water department. And then we'll dive into scenario four and four point five, uh, where we maintain, where we keep the, the existing, uh, maintenance, uh, lot. So columbariums, this is, uh, an initial sketch that we had back in January. Um, it's essentially, uh, something, a, a good example is out at the Veterans, Fort Riley Veteran Cemetery, out there by Ogden, um, by the, by the, uh, uh, by the airport. Um, they have, uh, some columbariums out there. Um, what we're looking at are, are structures that, that contain forty-eight niches. Uh, each niche structure is about, uh, eighteen thousand. Um, so, uh, there's, uh, a little bit of, uh, quite, quite, quite a bit of additional space there. What we're proposing at some of these areas is having about sixteen of these structures per to those pods.
You mean eighteen thousand dollars?
Eighteen thousand dollars for a structure, for a structure.
For the whole?
For a structure.
Okay.
Yep, for a structure.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep. And so those would be in this area here just south of Paisley Tower. We have two pods. And then, uh, potentially, uh, additional ones out here where we have rock. And so this kinda gives you, uh, an idea. We, we zoom in a little bit more. Paisley Tower is right here, dimmed out a little bit with some of the proposed columbariums. Uh, we have about sixteen different structures in this area proposed, including some of the flatwork. Um, but then we also looked at this as a potentially for, for the shop. Uh, the next image kinda gives you an idea of what that grade looks like there. Uh, there's quite a bit of, of grade in this area, some separation with the vegetation. Um, and access point would be over to the north side of, uh, of the, the park shop here. Before I move on to scenario two, are there any questions for scenario one? Scenario two, uh, like I mentioned, is the cl- potential collaboration between, uh, the cemetery and the, the zoo. Had conversations with, uh, Scott, making sure that we were in compliance with USDA and, and all their regulations that they need to meet for AZA. Uh, is, you know, as long as, as long as they have some way to keep gates locked, whether it's automated, like the one that's over here by the water tower, or the one that they have permanently locked over here, um, he saw no issue with, uh, cemetery, uh, staff coming in, uh, into, uh, a, a joint, uh, maintenance area. Uh, now, in this scenario, you know, it would be, essentially, this is a property line between, uh, the Sunset Cemetery and the zoo. Um, you know, not exactly fifty-fifty. I mean, we'd have to get into the details if we were to, to pursue this option, but, um, we would have to look at also, uh, rearranging the trail that's in this area. Right now, that trail, it's shown going through here, but it's actually on the outside of the gate. Uh, this is one of the Wildcat Creek linear trail, uh, extensions that then comes up along the southern, uh, edge of, of the cemetery. Um, so that's another consideration to take in is that we'll have to do something there with the trail. Uh, there is a, quite, you know, a little bit of, uh, of, uh, cut and fill in this area. This is an area that, uh, um, there is some space, but, uh, definitely some, quite a bit of earthwork, uh, happening here, uh, with this proposal. Um, but definitely some, some items, kinda gives you an idea here of the next image, uh, what that elevation is here, if we're cutting it east to west, looking to the north. So, um, again, it's, uh, definitely, uh, it's, I'm sure you saw the, 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 the dollars at the end of this, uh, presentation in your packet. This is definitely something that would be, uh, a little bit more, but only because of the square footage is, is more than doubled. Uh, we'd be looking at, uh, you know, thirty by a hundred and thirty foot shop, uh, in this area. Uh, something that we explored and had a conversation about, and, and Ron, this was a conversation that we had, once we were looking at Annaberg and potentially putting a shop out there, you know, could we take the shop that, uh, is at thirty-one, thirty-one Anderson, and could we take that to Anderson? We kinda applied the same thing. Could we take that shop and move it here? Uh, in, in the contractors that we've talked to right now, they're saying, uh, it's, it's a lot more expensive to move something than to build new, so. Um, we're still kinda waiting for a final number for that, but, uh, um, I believe there was also some conversation of, of that, potentially moving out to JMF. Um, but, uh, we found out real quick that it was a lot more cost-effective to build new than to, than to move something like that, so. Uh, with what's presented here in the, uh, in the plan, uh, we assume that it would be a new shop rather than something moved.
And why is the size of that one so much bigger than the other alternatives?
Because of the colla- collaboration between the zoo and the cemetery.
I mean, doesn't the zoo have to fund part of that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it'd be a collaboration. It'd be, uh, uh, funds from the zoo, uh, wherever else where we would, uh, be able to, to, to fund that, but...
They already have some buildings there.
They do, and, uh, they, uh, they're packed. Um, it's something that, that, something additional is something that Scott mentioned that he would, he would definitely need. Um, looking at what they had in their master plan, um, you know, it, it looks like this area was almost left untouched.
Yeah, I just don't wanna get sticker shock because, I mean, if the zoo's getting a benefit out of that, we have to look at in the context of what the zoo funding is and net that against the, this master plan. Like I said, I don't wanna say I don't wanna do that because of this huge cost when part of that's gonna go to the zoo, if it's necessary for the zoo, uh, to have it.
A hundred and thirty foot shop seems large for a cemetery that is almost built out. Compared to Sunrise that has a long future ahead and a lot of activity. Uh, so I think this needs to be scaled to what, to re- to reality.
Because initially...
Initially, I really kinda liked this option because you get the benefit of having them together, you, you combined uses of the space, all of that type of, uh, thing, so.
And that's something, details that we could get down if we wanna go down this path, you know, is it gonna be straight fifty-fifty? More than likely not. Could, could the cemetery have, you know, what we had proposed, a thirty by forty, and then most of everything else is the zoo? Again, the zoo would put in, you know, they put skin in the game, but, uh, if we wanna go down this route, if this is what we hear, uh, this evening, uh, we definitely dive into more of those details.
I don't, you know, want necessarily think we're making a decision for, for sure because, I mean, we're still discovering information that you're presenting.
Yeah.
Um, I like the idea of consolidating the two shops, if it's practical. And I think that the cemetery is, um, yes, we're still gonna have some burials, but we're not going to have the volume that, um, Sunrise is gonna have. And, uh, I like the idea of having it at the back of the cemetery where it's not visible and right up front. Um, and that's what I've appreciated about the current shops, are that they're across the street and they don't impose the, the, that, uh, industrial kind of thing into the, the aesthetics of the cemetery.
And really, the, the, the shop needs or what they're gonna service, is it gonna be for the most part just maintaining what's, what's there and trimming, getting the leaves and taking care of the little items that, that break versus, cause you're not gonna be doing any more burials?
One of the things to consider with this option is that, being that it be in... One of the things to consider with this option is that being that it be enclosed in the zoo, we we couldn't have bring in public if they were to meet in an office in this area. We would either have to meet them over at Sunrise and and move over here. Or, you know, if we do something a little different, you know, something over at the carriage house. You know, it'd be difficult to bring in the public into this enclosed space.
Where do they meet now?
Mike does have a sh- an office there at the existing maintenance lot in Sunset. So that's something to consider as well.
That's true.
But not large.
What, just because I'm now curious is, is there's no dedicated funding source for any of the zoo buildings or this kind of a building? There's no pile of money sitting there waiting for us to use and no, it's all coming out of either excess cash or general bonds or or bond and interest fund or something?
Yeah, that's accurate.
Okay, alright.
The zoo admission fees are supposed to go towards exhibits, not not O and M buildings.
Okay. Alright.
Any other questions about scenario two?
I would like to clarify the path that you're expecting to get to go back to the back of the of the cemetery lot. Is that one there along the the south end of the of the football field? The it's like a trail, but it's, is that big enough for equipment?
This one, about this one here or this one over here? Here, let me get you a bigger, a bigger picture here.
I'm talking about south of that football.
Right, right here.
So when you go into the zoo, there's a trail that goes back by the water tower. That goes down to this back area. In order to get to this area through the cemetery, you have to go through the north edge of this of the cemetery to get back in there. So I'm just think, I'm just trying to think what, ask what you're thinking about, what the route to this back area would be.
For the trail or for?
For equipment and for the services, the service of the employees, equipment wise.
So right now, there is a road that that travels over here to the west side of the cemetery. There is a gate here that goes into the zoo.
Yeah.
It's gravel, it's a little bit old. If we were to do this option two, we would have to definitely look at upgrading this 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 access point here. As far as the trail, the trail would just be rerouted and we would have to look at a little bit more detail as as how would that would that trail would get rerouted? Because it does dump out over here.
That area back there where you're showing a road is very narrow. Yeah.
Yeah, it would be used as a definitely as a more maintenance related. This this wouldn't be something where we would advise or have any any community members coming in to to visit the.
It's more of a road than a place where you could store vehicles or store materials too.
Yeah, there's some items out there that are stored, but for the most part, it's just held for maintenance. We even, there's even a a little bit of a little gate entry over here. I don't think it's completely shut off, but there there could potentially be an area that could be shut off.
And because there's a gate there now, doesn't mean there has to be, I mean, there's, things can change.
Any other comments for scenario two?
Next.
Scenario three, we dove a little bit more into the option for the Girl Scout, put putting in a a maintenance shop over at the Girl Scout Park. So here is the the edge of the cemetery now. This green line here, everything else over to the north is Girl Scout Park. The Girl Scout Park House is here, some of the the fire rings are immediately to the west of that. This is the water tower in Girl Scout Park, and then this is the an additional public work structure in this area. So this is a conversation that I had with with Randy in Public Works, you know, what is the future of this area? He said potentially this would go away at some time in the future. Looking at the space that's really in between these areas, wanted to look at, you know, what are the utilities that are in here? And and how would that affect a placement of a of a shop in in here? So if you turn on some of the layers in there for the city utilities, you start to look at the water, water supply sources and such. There's a perfect little rectangular in here in between some of those transmission water lines. You'll see here in a little bit where we where we lay something out and we would have just as much space if 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 we had. If we would stay over here at the existing maintenance spot. But here, there there's, you know, water, electricity in the area. But if we wanted to have gas here or or sanitary sewer, I believe we would have to chase that over here to the northeast. But there is a little bit of a spot there that could potentially house an option in Girl Scout Park.
What is it you would propose to put on that spot?
That would be another scenario where the maintenance shop could go, it's just a different scenario.
It's not the office.
If if this, so we are, we're pretty much, this is the, there's a, there's a chain link fence that goes here.
Right.
There's an access point that you could go into that area. Potentially, you could have an office there and 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 meet the public here. It wouldn't be as as enclosed over there with in collaboration with the zoo. So then a little bit focused into this area. You're looking at a lot that's about seventy-five hundred to eight thousand square feet with a new shop of thirty by forty. This would be something that the community members could meet the Sexton in this if there if there was a a little office in here. Some of the other items to look at really is is here, what that relationship is between those structures. There's maybe a little bit of a scale issue with this building here. But that's something that we'll definitely finalize for the final product. But gets to see how much vegetation is in the area, what separation is there between this area and the neighbors over here to the to the to the east? And then what that relationship is with Girl Scout Park and the and Sunset Avenue. But for this option for scenario three, are there any other questions? Alright, we'll go right into scenario number four, which is retaining the the maintenance lot that's there now, just north of the cemetery Sexton's house. And and what it would look like. So I mentioned earlier that I had a conversation with Public Works and Community Development. If we were to go in and and renovate this lot, we would have to follow our own municipal code. And so one of the major items is that Sunset Avenue is a major collector. One of the things that Public Works would like to see is that we take off these smaller drives in in that scenario. So those would go away, we would have more of a vegetative barrier between the the Sunset Avenue. And and the Sexton's house potentially. But of course, there's other areas where we could put in more of a barrier throughout here. One of the items that that one of the, one of the neighbors brought up a concern is that Sunset Lane is is very narrow. And if, you know, if you get to a point where you have to almost pull over very much, you know, it's really tight in there, essentially is is what I heard. So if we went with this scenario, our maintenance folks would have to come down Sunset Lane and turn right into this area. I did have a conversation with Evergy, there is a a an electrical, a an Evergy pole in this area. It's within right of way, so that could move to the south. And we could take out, you know, put in maybe fourteen fifteen feet, cut that into the into the property and have a a turnoff area. Where where we lighten that that choke point between the neighbors and the maintenance, our maintenance staff. So expanding this this entryway and then, yeah, that would be an an option there.
May not be in the scope of what you were looking at, but maybe someone else's staff could answer. It is, is that lot of a val- of value if we were to want to sell it? Do we think it would sell or would bring very much if we did?
So according to the Riley, well, actually, I have Riley County G I S open now, we could look at what it's valued at. And I believe it's around a hundred and one thousand, I think, is what the land is valued at, building about twenty-eight. You know.
What's it zoned?
That's current.
It's it's zoned, it's zoned as residential.
Right, if someone would have to tear down what's there and build, so that's the, I just, just don't know how desirable that would be or.
It's a nice neighborhood.
It is a nice neighborhood.
And has historic kind of connections.
So it's zoned as RL slash O and E, Low Density Residential District, with an established neighborhood overlay.
About what's the the feet or acreage of that?
The acre, oh, sorry, I think we were at point four six, yep.
About a half acre?
Yeah, about half an acre.
Half an acre.
There was some conversation, is there, you know, could we go in? And this will be part of section four point five, we'll dive in a little bit more into that. Actually, we could probably go right into that, since we're talking about this lot. Where could we, you know, you could tell some of these other lots are are smaller. So could we go in and turn this into two lots? The issue there, and I'm going to bring up a different image than what I had in your packet because the orientation changes. And I want to make sure that we're oriented correctly. So we had a survey done out there earlier this year to make sure, you know, what we were getting into out there as far as utilities. So I'm going to turn this off here. Actually, I'm going to put on a layer so I can talk about the utilities here, talk about the abandoned, and then we'll talk about the the existing, there we go. So this essentially would be option four point five, right? With the recommendation that this governing body gave back in November, if we were just to sell the, you know, both properties. Well, let's say, you know, right now, we're talking just about the about the lot. So, you know, could we potentially plaid it into two different ones and sell them as two different properties? Well, we could, but there would definitely be a lot of rerouting of utilities. So looking at this, this is the same orientation that you're looking at here, north is up. One of the items that, one of the bigger items is really a ten inch water line that goes straight down the middle of this property. As you can see, there's an abandoned line here that was in Sunset Avenue. And whenever they, I mean, I talked to Randy and he wasn't even sure when this was done. So they abandoned some water line over here in the in the right of way and then just went through city property. So the option that we're looking for at four, we kind of put the 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 maintenance shop fairly tucked over in this corner, making sure that we meet all our offsets. But, yeah, we're, we would be out of that way where we wouldn't have to move that water line. However, we do sell it, then there would have to be quite a few rerouting of of utilities.
You sold it into two lots?
If we sold it into two lots, even just one lot, just because we have city facilities within that property. This would have to, in talking with Randy, he he, you know, if if this goes anywhere down that road, we would definitely have to go back in and and put this water line back over here where it used to be, out in in right of way. And then you also have, you know, sanitary sewer that goes straight from the cemetery Sexton's house, sanitary sewer is in green, it goes down right in the middle of this lot. This one may have to be moved if we were to put that option four with a a new maintenance shop over here in this southwest corner. But everything would have to be in some sort of easement over here on this eastern side of that property.
And you're saying if someone were to buy it, they'd have to do it, and if we want to remodel there, we'd have to do it?
If we were to sell it, I'm not sure how, if we had to move all those lines or not. That'd be a conversation with Public Works. If we had to do it, you know, potentially just the sanitary sewer, but the water could potentially stay there. Some of the electrical, it seems like, is coming over from the the cemetery itself. I'm sure there's a meter here somewhere as far as some, also some electrical over here in this northwest.
Yeah, just just trying to understand what our options are. I mean, is it going to be an impossible thing to sell or which makes it so you want to build?
Impossible, it's just going to cost us money to to get, potentially cost us money to get this, these easements in place. To make sure that it would be favorable for somebody to purchase.
Right, and then if we were to build there, we might have some extra costs to move some of that around as well. So there's kind of an offset there.
Yeah, the cost of moving those utilities would be greater than the price we could get for the lot, based on what you showed us earlier, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars.
I'm not interested.
That doesn't make a lot of sense.
Putting a lot of money into moving water lines and sewer lines. It's either a desirable lot or it's not. And if the purchaser wants to do something because they want to live there, that makes sense. But I don't think it makes sense for us to sell it, but spend more than we're receiving.
None of those options sound any good at all.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, when we're looking at all our options, if if those costs are so high, someone's not going to buy it. Does it make us default back into using it? Or are our costs to use it going to also be high to fix it for ourselves too?
No, the location of that proposed maintenance shop avoids that water line.
Yeah.
So you you've limited the things that have to be done by putting it there.
We would still meet some of those offsets, some of those setbacks that we would have to have off of Sunset Avenue. And then the offset that we would have over here on on the cemetery Sexton's house. I believe we would have to move that sanitary sewer because it is pretty much in this area. But it would clean it up, I mean, could it, could it be moved maybe further over here to this area? But there'd be some utility movement with this scenario, but it wouldn't be as extensive as some of the other ones, some of the other options.
And and by the time you move the Evergy electrical, I mean, we have a lot of money put into selling.
So in my conversation with Evergy, he said since it is in right of way, that it would get, they would get moved with no cost, but I would have to dig a little bit more.
Everything we do with them costs.
Absolutely, that's why I want to make sure to trust but verify, I was born in the eighties.
And and the current maintenance shop avoids all that, so why can't we just rebuild the current one?
Like, oh, sorry, rebuild as in its current situation, its current lot? So one of the things here, and you could kind of see that in this scenario, so this is a section line. I'm cutting right through the tower, the Sexton's house, the proposed area, and then some of this over here. It kind of gives you an idea of of what that looks like. So one of the issues that we're seeing now with the with the existing maintenance lot is that there's, I don't know, almost if it just rains any time, the 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 facility would get flooded. So that's one of the things that we would have to consider is make sure that we address those items. If we were to build something down here on the lower side of that lot. Putting it up here, you you wouldn't have to, I'm sure there's some runoff that we see from the Sexton's house. But we're not getting all that all that extra flow that's that's sheeting off directly to the north in that area. So that's one of the items that would be considered is to make sure that we're not just building something new and having the same issue with with flooding down at this at this northern corner of the lot.
Well, I would think, you know, we can have somebody take a look at that, obviously, we don't want it to flood, but maybe you can come up with a design that works and doesn't cause us to move a bunch of things around. And of course, that would eliminate using Sunset Lane as a point, we'd have to keep one of those driveways open.
So I I I believe it's the same thing, if we if we touch this, if we touch this lot, we have to follow our own municipal codes. Now, there's, I I don't know, that's that's a conversation with C D and and City Administration, a C M O. But, you know, there's there's ways to 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 put in variances there. But if we do anything new here, we do have to take those those items into consideration. That was an additional part of why we moved it further to the north and had that capability. Because Public Works is definitely encouraging us to take off those minor drives off of that major collector. Definitely a complicated scenario in 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 reviewing, reviewing these these options.
So do you ever have like, if you, in the scenario where you go up to Sunset Lane and get out, do you like ever pull a trailer with a backhoe on it? That you'd have to make those turns and things like that?
Yeah, yeah, that's something definitely.
Way too short of turning radiuses for that.
Yeah, yeah, that's something that, you know, something that we'd get into more detail in that in that area. Are you talking about like what we do now here or if we were to?
No, it shouldn't be a problem with you with those current cuts, but if you have to go up through Sunset Lane.
And that's where opening that up to have additional space there would help with those those items. But yeah, definitely more investigation there with with those options.
I think it would be, benefit the neighborhood to have the maintenance facility there relocated. Even if it were, I mean, I don't know, somebody will come along and want the site someday. But I still think I favor putting the maintenance activity at the back of the cemetery. West, very west extreme of the cemetery and working with the zoo. I'm not interested in spending a million and a half as this estimate, there's got to be some other way to do that.
That's a good segue into.
Cost.
Those numbers. Uh, so we'd, the only item that I didn't include in this would be the, 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 uh, design fees that you're looking at, eight to fifteen percent on designer fees. So, um, take these numbers with a grain of salt, that there would be an additional cost for design. But we did look at, uh, square footage cost for, for F F and E, so fixtures, furniture and, and equipment, and then any kind of concrete, uh, within the maintenance lots or, or getting to the maintenance lots as well. And then I did look at a little option of what it would take for us to, to upgrade the cemetery Sexton's house to meet, uh, current A D A standards. Uh, something that would be, uh, more usable for, for, uh, our or other, uh, city needs.
I'm not interested in putting money into renovating the Sexton's house. I think we have to figure out some other solution. Uh, it's, hasn't been working for us, I'm not su-, it wouldn't work probably in the future, there's a reason we're not using it, it's not on the site.
Well, my, I guess, that, those legal issues with the Sexton House would be the thing, because, I mean, if we put it back with the zoo, we still wanted an office, you could set an office up in the Sexton's house. The issue is, we're not in compliance with the use of the Sexton House, so legally, we were to lose that, and someone were to claim I'm an heir, they could get the house. I don't know how likely that is to happen.
It hasn't happened and it's sitting there empty now.
No, I know, I mean, I, I mean, um, I like the, frankly, like the zoo idea too, but then you do need the office.
Utilities.
And, and I'd want a little more research onto that lot to see if we're, you know, what, what would happen with it? Cause in lots of ways, I almost default to the current lot because of those issues.
That's what my thought is, if you, you know, if you add your number, scenario four, and renovating the Sexton's house is the cheapest option.
Yeah, but I think we need to look more, and if we did the zoo, how much does the zoo pay?
And, and, and I think, you know, if you renovated, I could see the Sexton, you know, you need, you need a place to meet with people, you know, that would work. There may be some other functions, uh, you could use that for. But, you know, and I like the, I like the zoo option also, but it looks like, you know, you didn't figure in the cost of improving the road and some other things.
No, that, that would be incorporated in that, the only item is the design fee, so you're looking at an additional eight to fifteen percent on top of what's there. So, everything else has the F F and E, the, the price of the utility relocation and then the road, what it would take to, to, to get to that area, those are included in that price.
And if the, if the zoo, zoo helped out, all that is, is just for coming from a different pocket, cause it's not like the fences.
Well, to, to me, it needs to be a real need by the zoo, something that's justified, that we were gonna wanna do anyway regardless, and then it works intuitive. If it's just a, a nice to have, so we're gonna do it for the zoo that we wouldn't have done it otherwise, well, then, yeah, it doesn't, it's really not an offset.
We hadn't heard yet that that was a big pressing issue.
Correct.
We, we might hear it sooner, we, we've been holding off, but.
I'm not real interested in, um, disturbing the, the Girl Scout Park either. I think we have a couple of facility, you know, city facilities there, but encouraging word is that those may be eliminated, two of them, the water tower certainly we need. But, um, I just don't want to intrude further. I think that's a nice, open space that has been protected down through history. And, uh, I, I'm not interested in being on board when we, uh, break that commitment.
So you've had all your meetings and everything, and obviously you have yourself and the staff. One of the things I didn't see here was a, was a recommendation, was there any, is there any other group, was there a big leaning towards one scenario or another?
There was some conversations at the beginning, um, when we started this process, what we had in mind was, you know, what's more beneficial. Um, uh, we looked at scenario one, potentially being, you know, tucked out there and on the western side of the, of the, of the property. That was, that was something that, that was favorable. Uh, as we explored the feasibility there with the, uh, keeping it where it's at now, that became favorable because it wasn't, you know, you don't have to deal with all the, the huge relocation of, of, of utilities. You know, I think we're looking at like six hundred feet of relocation if we're looking at that option. Uh, here, if we were to maintain the, the, the current lot, we would have to move some items around, mostly just the sanitary sewer, there'd be some items there. But, um, that seemed a little favorable, um, at that point then as well, we were kinda getting a, a, a nice compromise at that point. Uh, but for sure, we wanna make sure that we, we do something as far as a, a, a maintenance lot, a, a maintenance shop here. Yes, the, 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 there's no more, uh, burials to be sold there, um, but there is a small, um, you know, a, a small shop that we could have our, our, our maintenance equipment. Otherwise, if we were just to take this all down and bringing in our, our, moving all our, all our, uh, operations over to Sunrise, you know, we have, uh, staff taking the first thirty, forty-five minutes to load up equipment, bringing on out, going, you know, we're, we're out there at Sunset about three times a week. So that tends to add up, uh, you know, that, for that, uh, loading and unloading, um, moving forward as well. So, um, definitely looking for, um, I mean, we're still, we're still talking about it, you know, when the scenario with the zoo came up, we thought that was a great idea too. You know, but then each, 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 each scenario has its pros and cons for sure.
So is there not some way we could rebuild on Sunset on the maintenance lot, but hook in some kinda stormwater pipe in front of the building, so, and then hook in that, there's gotta be a stormwater thing fairly close that we could get that water out of there and build on the same area, so we don't have to relocate, uh, the one, whatever line going through there. Is, is that not, and really an option, any ideas?
Again, I think if, if, if we touch anything on that property, we have to follow our own, uh, M D C, our own codes, but, uh, Ron could definitely speak to that.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's one of the reasons we have this municipal facilities process, where you have to balance the needs of the entity that's there versus the, the needs of the, in this case, the neighborhood and the community. And whether or not, uh, those strict setback lines are, uh, should need to be adhered to. I think you could, I think there's probably options for stormwater, I'm not sure how old that sewer line or what kinda condition it's in, but I'm guessing it's probably pretty old.
The sewer line from the house, yeah.
Okay, so it, it, it's in good shape. But clearly relocating that water line, so I think working around that, uh, would be, if you're gonna stay on that site, would be good. And I think it would be good to try and improve that access off of the, uh, off the lane versus off of Sunset. But, and I think staff's done a pretty good job of trying to locate the building away from that, so they could, they could do that.
Some observations we've made internally, the Sexton's house and the, the lot, obviously to the north, served Sunset Zoo for a long, or Sunset Cemetery for a long time, a, as a place where business was conducted and oversight of the cemetery. It's transitioned, it's no longer needed, but it is still prime real estate. The other three options that you're considering are inside the cemetery or adjacent to the zoo. It's no longer needed to have the Sexton's house, nor is it no longer needed to have such an elaborate space for our equipment and shops. The relocation's really about the next fifty years. And for the next fifty years, if these three lots can turn into something else, then, you know, the short-term cost of that needs to be factored into what the next fifty years could be. When we look at this, Colbariums is going, or, you know, they're still gonna be active, they're still gonna take some oversight and management, but that can be done from Sunrise. So the encouragement here is to look long-term. Those two lots and the, and the Sexton's home have a future. We hold on to those and we, and we try to Band-Aid them, uh, we have other property in town we've all dealt with that we've held on to for, for too long, and they turn into several hundred thousands, sometimes, sometimes million dollars of investments just to keep them up to A D A. It, it's an opportunity, we no longer need the property for what it was intended for originally. We're transitioning to an alternative site that's gonna last for hundreds of years. We have enough plots at Sunrise. That's where we need to invest, that's obviously our priority. What we do at Sunset, you know, I, I just encourage a long-term view. At some point, the utility came through there and cut through that lot because it was easier and it was cheaper. It wasn't the right thing to do for those lots.
That's right.
And, and we're just looking for, again, that long-term view, uh, there's potential. Even a couple two hundred thousand dollar homes and a renovation of the Sexton House would put three properties back on the tax rolls, each paying three to four grand apiece. You take that times fifty years, you can make it up. So I, I just encourage you to look out and, and not necessarily what we're, what we're doing today. The Sexton House has, is complicated, and there's ways we can get out from underneath that. Um, it, it's gonna take a process, it's not gonna happen overnight, but again, just encourage you to look.
Is it beneficial for the city to become a landlord?
No.
No.
Never, that's my opinion, that's not the city's opinion.
Hasn't worked well.
No, it hasn't.
Well, I agree with what was in that legal memo, which is, and it kinda mentioned if your goal is to get rid of it or not have it anymore, either way, either the heir gets it or you sell it, it's gone, and it's back on the tax rolls either way. And either they do something with the lot or they sell it, and we've got somebody else. I mean, we talked a lot about that zoo thing, but we really didn't get any feedback from you guys. I mean, is, is that something that the zoo needs, or is it gonna be something that'll be brought up later, or is that simply a luxury?
I asked Casey the same question, and, and he can hop up and give me the answer, I mean, they've, they've looked at it, they've analyzed it. Uh, go ahead, Casey, you, you have more details and more information than I do.
No, the, the, talking to Scott, just the facilities that they have today are not, they don't hold all their maintenance needs as well. So, um, it was just kind of an idea to see if we can join them together, gives a little bit of, uh, takes a little bit of risk out from our, our facilities being out by themselves, uh, tied into, with the zoo. Uh, but their equipment, they, they've repurposed some of their buildings that are up there already for other things. And so I think they actually have pushed some of their maintenance needs out, and so that actually is that opportunity to join them together, where they actually get space as well, if that's an option. So, I, I don't think they had it in their master plan, but again, I don't think they, master plan really looked at the, that full maintenance need of, um, of the zoo itself. Is that what you're after?
Yeah, it's, no, I appreciate the comments, it's still, would we do it, would we not do it, would it become a priority? It's hard to tell, I think from what you, Jason, brought up before, for long-term, it could be a good long-term idea, uh, to do. I mean, we're still, if we were to do that, be short the office, especially if we're getting rid of the Sexton's house, which is another problem that we've got.
Yeah, but the zoo's planning on doing more expansion, so I think their maintenance needs are gonna increase in the future, so that's. Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I, I originally liked the idea, you know, selling the Sexton's house and that lot, and I still like that. But, you know, as Jason pointed out, if we're gonna do that, we have to realize that may take us five years. And, uh, that may be the right thing to do from, from this standpoint, so I sort of, you know, as I look at all of it, if you're looking at it long-term and we can get things back on the property rolls, you know, like, like eventually happened with the Community House, I think that probably took five years. So, so I shouldn't be concerned about the amount of time, that, that I guess this scenario two is maybe the best one.
For the most part, you guys access that through the zoo then, there's no reason why, we, we don't have to build that road going up and down the west side to, to some kinda standard if it's, if we could access it all through the zoo or not.
Yeah, I mean, then you're, you're kinda doing the, you're, you're going a long way around to get, to get staff into there, is what you're saying, right? If you, if you don't improve this.
But a gravel road, you need more than a gravel road.
For a tractor or a mower?
All, all your, all that, uh, all the water from the cemetery drains to, to that area.
So it tears up whatever.
You would have to be an approved road back there. I'm not saying it has to be paved.
Right.
But it's gonna have to be maintained.
You probably need to step over to the microphone, Mike, yeah.
It's gonna need to be much, much more maintained than it is at this point today.
What did the cemetery board, you've run it by them twice or three times now, what was their consensus? So have they reported in yet, are they still waiting for more information, or where are they?
They were in favor of, of, of option four here.
Four.
Um, their section option, the second one would be then, uh, would be scenario one, um, uh, so that's really.
So they were the same thing we're weighing in the end here tonight.
But their, their number one was, uh, they're strongly recommended. Once, once we, once we looked into it, had the conversation with Public Works and Community Development, and make sure that we were following our own rules, um, and that it, that it is feasible, um, they definitely leaned, leaned a lot more to scenario four.
Does your cost estimate in the back here take into account moving the sewer line, moving the water line, working, I mean, completely redoing the utilities on the existing lot?
The.
Before you even start building the building?
The only, uh, the only thing that wasn't considered in that price would be moving this major water line here. We did not consider that in that, in that estimate.
If we try to sell that to somebody to split it and put houses on it, someone's gonna have to move that water line. So I, I just don't think that it's that highly sought after by the general public to build houses on with that there. And so it makes, to me, it makes more sense for us to, to keep it and do something with it. But, but I don't know, maybe some develop, I just don't know how you can put a couple hundred grand into a, a couple of lots and then still sell the house that's.
Did you get an estimate from Randy to move that water line?
Uh, he gave me, back in January, he gave me a per linear foot, uh, for any kind of utilities, thirty to fifty, a linear foot. Uh, for this ten-inch line, I don't know if that's maybe a little bit more, um, I think if, if, you know, what if we heard something from, from this evening, uh, we'd definitely explore it more. But he did mention that this, when he saw this, he's like, yeah, this is definitely something that we would have to move, just when we get to that, you know, depends on what the, what the needs are.
Yeah, the utility itself obviously could pick up the moving of the water line. We wouldn't have to strap a future owner or take it out of, you know, the bonding of the project or anything. So, again, I just, I, I go back to when it was done, I, I think it's questionable today as to why they did it.
Well, they figured they're gonna have that land forever, and so it didn't matter where they put it.
Yeah.
The problem is, yeah, there's pluses and minuses to everyone, so everybody's gonna have an opinion what, which plus is more important and which minus is less important, but I don't know.
Has this discussion helped you?
Clarify your own thinking?
Uh, I'll have to go back to the video and review footage.
Ju- just from what I'm hearing tonight, I mean, um, not to jump in there with Tom Fongzo, but just kinda what you, maybe what you don't want us to, to go after would be the start, and so we can actually focus some of our scenarios down. Uh, the scenario two was not presented to the cemetery board. That's something that actually is probably came out of, of most recent times, so, um, and again, that, that could be phased. That, that really is a recent kinda thought process on our part to try to look at a totality of what we had offered here. So, um, it could be phased as well, um, that may be an option.
I wouldn't want it to be punitive to the zoo either, I mean, they have operational and utili-, you know, uh, needs. Uh, so, you know, I, there's a way to make things happen so that it's beneficial to both party, both, um, city departments.
And I don't wanna speak for Scott, but I think he was, he, he well, well received on us looking this direction. If that is, if that was, again, I don't wanna speak for him on that, but I know his opinion was that, that gives them some space that they didn't have programmed before, so. But that is a rare, a fairly new scenario that we, uh, kinda put in.
So drop number three and talk to the cemetery board about number two and.
Can the two departments share equipment?
We, we do already.
You already do?
Uh, to some extent, um, yeah.
To a point we do, we, we share larger equipment, we don't share lower.
Mowers.
Uh, they're, 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 they're using one now, I mean, we, we do, and some gators, so we, we do have a little bit of interaction, but some of it's our, um.
Mowers are busy all the time right now.
Yeah. Yeah, some of the stuff that we're phasing out, it's, it's just a phasing plan, and, and the zoo's using some of that, uh, as we speak, until they can replace some of their items as well. until they can replace some of their items as well, so.
Yes, I think more, you, you mentioned, you know, in my mind, you know, four and two are the only ones I would consider at this point. You know, and then the Sexton's house, I think John probably hit it on the head. One way or the other, we oughta probably get rid of it. Cause he's just repurposing it, apparently he's not, not going to work. And, and so those are where I'd put, put the effort on getting some more research, four and two, and I'd discard the others.
Would it be so bad if it went back to the heirs?
No, no.
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 I mean, we don't, we would not be sinking a lot of money into it.
No, no.
That's one way to look at it. Unless it is beneficial to the city to retain it and use it. Um, anyway, I just wanted to mention that.
Get, get Katie to work on getting rid of it.
One way or another. Okay.
All right, any other commentary you want from us? All right, uh, people have been hanging out. Why don't we throw it open for some public comment? You got up to five minutes, talk one time. And we won't debate you, but we'll take everything under advisement.
You may have ideas we haven't even thought about, so please, this is the brainstorming period.
Donneshen Camlin, nineteen twenty-two Leavenworth. I just wanna use this opportunity to say that as a neighbor, uh, I really appreciate the work that has been done by cemetery board, by the city in informing us. And we've always had a good neighbor in Mike Muller. Um, it's been an asset, as far as I'm concerned, to live near such a beautiful cemetery. And hooray for saying that we need a road review, an irrigation review, and a tree steady for both of them. I do wanna throw down an idea for Sunrise Cemetery. Um, if we're gonna modernize and look to the future, we should really be looking at the direction of the roofs of all of these buildings and capturing solar energy. So park that in the list of details that you're not ready for. Um, it just strikes me that if we could have one curb cut, maybe not two of them, off Sunset Avenue, if we were to stay with scenario four, I've noticed as I play chicken with the traffic going up and down Sunset Lane, that sometimes when we're face-to-face and there's no room to move off, it's really a one-lane lane. Um, people who are using the adjacent dentist office or pot orf, that, that spot, we often use that as an escape hatch, either coming into Sunset or the person trying to emerge when we have a slow motion head-to-head.
Standoff.
So it is a very narrow lane and it, it needs that taken into consideration. But I'm, I'm also pleased with the work that's been done and the due consideration of all of these plans. And I just think, uh, the whole neighborhood benefits by the cemetery, the excellent work that's been done to take care of it. And I look forward to a future with more trees, better roads in the cemetery for pedestrians and traffic, and maybe some ideas for tall grasses.
All right, anybody else? You can start talking and sign on way out.
Hi, I'm Jessica Canfield, um, and, and a resident on Sunset Lane. And I would just strongly advocate for not having the entrance on Sunset Lane. I'm not sure if you've gotten to the point of having a turning radius, um, study, um, and how wide that would need to be, but I'm thinking about even just the trash trucks being able to turn in and turn out. It is a really tight pinch point right there. Uh, I don't think widening the lane, um, adds much other than more concrete. Um, so I think that, you know, if we're keeping the footprint, um, or the idea on scenario four, perhaps the building footprint, um, you can look at a better positioning and seeing if there's a variance to keep the access point on Sunset Avenue and not putting it on Sunset Lane. Um, I just think that that's creating, uh, kind of a worst-case scenario for already a very kind of tightly congested area. So, you know, I think just some additional study and sensitivity to the barriers, um, and, um, the aesthetic character and the vegetation that are needed to kinda buffer in this, this little spot. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wanna come up and start talking? Mel?
Well, good evening. Um, I, I just wanted to, uh, advocate for leaving the shop where it is and, uh, upgrading it. Uh, I did have a chance to meet with, uh, Mike, uh, about this, uh, and, uh, you know, he is concerned about drainage on the, uh, the paved lot heading towards that building. But as a, someone that specializes in drainage, I see that that's a pretty straightforward fix for this a- as well as leveling the, the, uh, work floor, uh, space floors in, in the existing shop. Mike also mentioned that, uh, uh, that building would be adequate, uh, to, to keep, uh, you know, if we upgraded. But there needs to be one more bay, uh, that's high enough for a backhoe when the backhoe is roded over from the big cemetery, the other cemetery, uh, just to get it, you know, inside, uh, under some shelter. Uh, and, uh, I, I, I don't know if that could be, uh, a separate bay to the, to the east of the, uh, existing building to the west, but I believe that, uh, that's all very, uh, doable on this lot and probably the least expensive, uh, scenario. Uh, as far as, uh, the, the historic value of leaving things this way, uh, i- is, is quite beneficial because if we, when we think about the water tower and the cemetery entrance gate and the wall and Sexton's house, uh, of course, this is attached, uh, design-wise with the Sexton House. Uh, the stairs coming down from the back, uh, of the house to the, to the lot and to the shops. And a new owner may not want to, uh, have that kinda connection, but on the other hand, uh, they might. Uh, if, uh, if this is, uh, 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 the Sexton House is gonna be, uh, i- if it would be put on a register for, uh, grants and tax credits, uh, uh, you know, for, by the city or a new owner, um, uh, having that relationship the way it is right now would be very beneficial to the environs of that house. So, I, I just see, uh, pluses to leaving, leaving, uh, it where it is and, and upgrading. And also, uh, uh, installing a, uh, pedestrian, uh, crosswalk light that's been much needed for many years, uh, at Sunset and Leavenworth that could be controlled, uh, by the, uh, maintenance folks, uh, needing to access Sunset. Uh, I think that would be, uh, some ideas there. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Bruce McMillan, nineteen twenty-six Sunset Lane. And, uh, I'm going to limit my remarks basically to safety issues. And, uh, a couple of them already been, uh, brought up. Uh, Donneshen Camlin and I happen to be the co-chairs for the Landmark Water Tower Neighborhood Association. And, uh, the, the narrowness, uh, of, of the turning, uh, has been discussed. Uh, we have several families. Jessica and Billy's is one that have small children in the neighborhood. And they play and run and use their bicycles up and down the lane quite a bit. That is their play yard, so to speak. Uh, uh, the, uh, addition of the curb cut, uh, would, I think, uh, tend to possibly, depending upon time of day and so forth, impact, uh, the use of the neighborhood and for the children, uh, in the neighborhood. Uh, we understand that, uh, there are restrictions that need to be maintained. We understand the municipal, uh, restrictions within the new development plan. And, uh, understand that the drainage is a consideration as well. We understand that. Uh, opening into, uh, Sunset Lane, uh, with a driveway and shedding the water across Sunset Lane into the dentist's parking lot goes straight into a ravine that is on the backside of Saint Lu-, Saint Luke's, the former Saint Luke's Church, uh, and right on down through Delaware Avenue. And there's a large culvert at the bottom of Delaware Avenue that goes down the hill and through somebody's yard into Denison Avenue. So opening up the drainage in that compa-, capacity, uh, would, would also be a consideration. I think we need to look at, as, as we look at runoff, uh, from that piece of property as well. So, I'll stand for any questions or comments. Uh, but safety, uh, I think is the first category that, that I would offer at this point if you consider, uh, continuing with, uh, the Sunset Lane and Sunset, uh, property. Uh, they've been very good neighbors, uh, for all these years. And a number of you have already been to my place and know, know the, the situation with traffic and, and the, the impact, uh, that that may encounter. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Charlene Brownson, I live at twenty-eight, twenty-two Johnson Valley Drive. And, um, I'm a Kimball descendant, so if you need help with the, connecting with the Kimball family, I'm personally, uh, I would like, I'm a member of Participation Alliance also. I personally would like, if it goes back to the family, to see it sold to someone that's going to preserve it but have the funds set aside for some kind of historical project, um, in, uh, the judge and chorus name.
All right, anybody else? We'll go ahead and close public comment, knowing that there'll be more chances to comment on this once we actually decide something, so.
I have one question.
Go ahead.
Because, uh, Alfonso, we're talking about, you, you were talking about the required, uh, to follow the MDO. Does the city, can the city, does the city require a lot like this to access the property from an al-, a one-lane alley and not give access to the street?
That was my understanding in, in reviewing this with Community Development and Public Works. With Sunset Avenue being a major collector, uh, they were heavily in favor of taking off those two drives from the property.
But it's not required is the question.
Yeah, but that's the point, heavily in favor and.
Required is different.
Two different things. I mean, I think if we eliminated one of them, that, that's fifty percent solution. Why not go that route?
You tried.
Was there, on, it'd have to be the lower drive that would be eliminated 'cause you have to have at least a hundred foot between dri-, uh, entrance ways. So Sunset or Leavenworth, then that top drive would have to be there. And then, then you have Sunset Lane where you'd have to re- put it kinda in the middle of that area. Cause there was, there was like a hundred foot between entrances.
That'll work. I mean, don't keep either of them, just put a new one, but have one.
I, I was just.
But you're right, that, that, that would be a good solution.
Yeah.
There are solutions, is all I'm saying, it's not.
All right, um, any more questions for Alfonso?
Have we given you enough confusion to, uh, questions?
Thank you very much.
I wanna say, great, great briefing. You did a lot of work on that and brought a lot of information to us tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just the, uh, the voice. There was a lot of work in this, but thank you very much.
All right, uh, we'll wrap up that part of the work session and move on to the city manager briefing.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. So try to move through this, uh, fairly quickly. I don't have a, a lot of information to share, but, uh, just reminders, uh, Mayor, you've got, uh, the July eleventh and eighteenth radio shows. And then Commissioner Butler, you're scheduled for August.
You got August.
All right, and then, uh, other upcoming meetings, Joint City, County, uh, County is scheduled to be at the city next month, uh, Thursday, July, uh, thirteenth. And so the Food and Farm Council, uh, is, I don't think that date's right.
No.
So. Third, third, July twentieth. I'm sorry, that thirteenth was if you have other items you want to consider, but that's probably, would take most of the time. Good Morning Manhattan is Thursday, July twentieth also at seven fifteen AM. And our own Parks and Rec Director is the speaker, so if you're interested in that, uh, make sure you let our office know. Your governmental luncheon is, uh, scheduled for July twenty-fourth at noon. And then, uh, also, uh, there's a, starting to get, uh, information on the Lake Kansas Municipalities Conference. That's October seventh through the ninth. Uh, and it's in Wichita this year. Early bird registration of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, uh, is between June thirtieth and July twenty-third. And that saves fifty bucks if you want to pre-register for that. There's also overlap with that with the AUSA Conference, which is October ninth through the eleventh. So if there's a desire for folks to go to AUSA, uh.
Is that in DC?
Yes.
Mark, you're probably gonna wanna go to that, yeah?
Yep.
Uh, other invitations that have come along are September eleventh Day of Remembrance. That's, uh, September tenth, uh, at City Park, uh, starting at three for family event, picnic at five, and ceremony at five-thirty. RSVPs are due by the end of August. What else did I have? I think that's all I had on schedules. Just kinda run through, uh, planning charts for the seven ele-, the eleventh of July. Uh, on the general agenda, we've got, um, the revenue neutral rate, which we covered earlier. Several items pertaining to, uh, annexation and water and sewer, uh, extensions, benefit districts, and contracts for, uh, work to be done, uh, for a proposed facility there by the robo-, car, the old robo-car wash area. So, uh, we, at this time, uh, we are not recommending annexation. So there's, we've done a service analysis. We don't think it's, uh, uh, necessarily, uh, appropriate for that to occur, but.
Still sell them stuff.
But we'll still provide both services, um, at this point. And assuming they've, and they're interested in participating in the benefit districts for those. We would also have, uh, review of the, kinda the Johnny Call copyright, uh, and, uh, different aspects of that, which, uh, for you, as well as a resolution that not only deals with that, but any locos or anything else that we might have, uh, emblems of that we might be of interest to at least start the, a policy on, uh, giving us guidance for that, for your consideration. And then we have an outside city sewer-only request, uh, on Murray Circle. Uh, on, uh, consent, uh, we've got, uh, uh, continued process for the, uh, eminent domain easements on Wildwood. We got second readings of those zonings. We've got, uh, uh, we have a board member on the Douglas Center Advisory Board that has, uh, uh, not shown up for, uh, numerous times and essentially has kind of abandoned that position. So we believe that, uh, the person no longer lives in the community, so, but the commission has to take that action.
Take action, okay.
Uh, to correct that situation. Uh, we would anticipate a ward of, uh, some improvements at the wastewater treatment plant on the clarifiers. They'd only be open later this week. Uh, authorize, uh, the financing for that as well. And then we have, uh, had a bid opening on the Winsong Lane bank stabilizations and had a couple of bidders on that, so we'll be recommending a ward on that. And also, uh, uh, purchase of a street sweeper. It's been in our capital improvement program. And then some recommendations for, uh, professional services on the gateway plan as well as on the Sunset Avenue. street project improvement as well. Then moving down on the 18th, we've got fairly light agenda at this point. We've got another continued final second reading on the easement acquisitions as well as that second one with the change order on the North Campus corridor likely going to move to the general agenda because we want to update you on that project. And this is, I want you to consider a change order to move forward with the project since we still have EBR construction on that. That's going to be a bridge for the next phase for us to be able to provide some access for emergency vehicles and stuff and proceed with that while we're doing some other work. But we want to give you an update on that whole intersection project.
Bridge meaning metaphor or bridge meaning real bridge?
A conduit. Not a real bridge.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Just checking.
Also a request for qualifications on wastewater treatment plant solids upgrade and expansion, and then some temp note sale. And finally, finalizing those general, or the industrial revenue bonds for Genesis. And then I would like to add an executive session that evening for my mid-year evaluation. All right, that's all I had, Mayor.
All right, since I know he's coming to the first comment meeting of the month, have we moved any, done anything into that massage therapist who had the drug conviction or something? I think, I think there was generally consensus that we should make that happen somehow.
So if you want to revisit the topic and you want to change that requirement, that would be something that, we're certainly willing to bring that back to you for that consideration?
Yeah, because my understanding on that was, you know, he had a marijuana conviction or something, something to do with marijuana. And it's the way the state law is written that says it's a crime of moral perpetuity.
We have a, which I think is ridiculous. We can amend that, so when we drafted our massage therapy ordinance in 2018, we mirrored similar ordinances, and many cities took that stance of a definition of, you can't have a therapist's license if you've committed one of those crimes of moral perpetuity, and it listed all of those, including if you've been convicted of, you know, possession of marijuana. And that's what that person's misdemeanor or whatever that was is, but we can eliminate that if you buy a simple change of the order.
If we can, I'm with the mayor. I think it's just crazy for, you know, with half of that being legal in most of the states now, to deny the guy a license because he smoked a joint.
At some point.
We need, we need to change that, because that doesn't meet my definition of a crime of moral perpetuity.
So I hear a concurrence of having that legislation brought back to you for reconsideration.
There you go.
Okay. We can also convey that to the gentleman so that he doesn't.
He can stay home.
Need to, but he may want to anyway. But I don't know that we can get it on those meetings, but we'll do our best.
Let them know that we're, yeah.
That we're working on it, okay?
Second thing.
Consider me a neutral on that. I'm not.
Yeah, all's I'm doing is edging it, I'm back in front of you.
Not passionate about approving it. I'm more interested in the massage therapy and the issues that come about from the shady kind of operations. And we do have some in the area, so that was our push at the time.
All right, Jared, I had somebody tell me that the scooter people, there's, he walks on the linear trail from Red Bud up to the Four Points, and there's two or three times he's found abandoned scooters out there. Then I'm not sure if the scooter people, obviously, they got GPS and they ought to be able to track those.
They know where they are, yep.
So they're, I tell them not to worry about them, they'll get them eventually.
Usually they, if a scooter hasn't moved in 24, 36 hours, they go and move it and rebalance it. But usually the idea is if one's been parked somewhere, someone will come back and pick that up and move it again, and it'll move itself. But if it doesn't move, yeah, they'll go find it and charge it.
The light was red, so I'm not sure if things is out of order, battery's dead, something, but it's not like someone was going to, could use it even if they wanted to at that point, but.
Jared did set up, you can report that on the reported app, and it goes straight to the company. So if he takes the reported app, takes a picture of it, it'll go right to the company if people are concerned about. That's what I tell everybody, because I get a couple of scooter things all the time.
It doesn't work.
Pass that on. I noticed that there've been, I've been all over the news that there's childcare, childcare grants were released. Apparently, we didn't get ours.
I think we did.
We did.
It was over 2 million.
Why didn't I see it?
I just, I just saw an email yesterday, so I don't know if they're prepared to do a news release on it or what.
Big friggin' deal. I thought I would have heard about it instantaneously practically, so.
And again, I can't remember whether, I mean, it's the Chambers Task Force, but I think technically it was the foundation, community foundation, that was the applicant.
And GMC, it was the big announcement that it was.
Yeah, I heard, yeah, the big announcement out of Topeka, Governor Kelly releases, yeah, $200 million, but I assumed we would hear about it right away. But good, we got it. So that's a start. Okay, go ahead, guys. What else you got? Lynda, you got anything down there?
I want to talk about Cox parking on the trail along Knox Lane. They're, day after day, they're, they're working on a pole, and we have a sign right beside it that says, "No vehicles, no motor vehicles on the trail." And mostly it's Cox that violates that. And I just wanted, I don't know how to, do I do report it? I mean, what is it I need to do?
I mean, I'm happy to look into it. I'm assuming Cox and all the utilities have an easement, and that trail's probably on the easement.
I don't know.
So in order to work on their equipment that's on the easement, the general sign is for people, people that aren't, don't have permission or the right to be on the trail.
There's a gravel driveway right beside it. I mean, I'm just saying.
Okay.
It's nice.
We can certainly pass along the complaint.
Take a picture of it and send it to reporter.
Just generally.
All right, John, you got any?
I just, I did want to make, mention too that I attended the welcoming for the Mandela Fellows at the Leadership Studies Office Building at K-State. There are 25 fellows from Sub-Saharan Africa, each a different country. And it's a wonderful experience to get acquainted with them and get to know them. And so there's something on Thursday afternoon, and then a graduation after they've been here like six weeks. So just if you get the opportunity, one of the things they do is come down here to City Hall and look at our facilities and have a discussion here in this room. And they get to sit at the microphones and talk. So I don't know who, sometimes, it's mostly the mayor, I think, that interacts with them, but we'll see how it works out. It's different every year, so. But it's a good experience for us to think about people who live in dictatorships and do not have, who are in awe of the democracy that we have. And it's important that we pass that concept on. That's all.
And you got something?
Yeah, I move to adjourn the June 27, 2023 City Commission Work Session.
Second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, please call the roll.
That's me. Commissioner Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Manna?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Mayor had us all.
Yes.
Motion passes three, two, one.